All right, well, let's go ahead and get the, get the meeting started. We'll call it to this is the meeting is the LPA. And we'll call that to order. We do the roll call, Russell.
Yes. Okay, let's see. Okay, so Chair Brinkus.
Here.
Vice Chair Hartman.
Here.
Board Member Albritton.
Here.
Board Member Jablonski.
Here.
And Board Member Kaczynski. Here. We have a quorum there.
All right, great. And I don't see it on the agenda, but let's do a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
America.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
One nation.
Which it stands, one nation, under God.
And justice.
Indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
David, I think from now on, I'm just gonna let you say it for all of us. That was great.
Maybe it goes back to my days in radio.
All right, item number three, Russell, if you can read that in.
Okay, this is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, recommending that the town council approve the 10-year water supply facilities work plan and adopt amendments to the text of utilities element and capital improvements element of the town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan, providing for an effective date.
Great, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve this?
I'll move second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion on this item? Is there anyone from the public would like to speak on this item?
There's no hands, right?
See any hands here.
All right, with no further discussion, Russell, if you can call the roll.
Certainly. Okay, Board Member Albritton.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonski.
Yes.
Board Member Kaczynski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hartman.
Yes.
And Chair Brinkus.
Yes. Thank you. All right, and then the approval of the minutes. We have the minutes from November 19th, and we do have an amended set of the minutes that were looking.
I make a motion to approve the amended set of minutes.
Second.
All right, motion, a second. Any further updates or corrections to the minutes? Okay, is there anyone from the public that has, wants to speak on this item?
I see no one raising their hands from the public mayor.
Thank you. All right, you can call the question, Russell.
Board Member Albritton.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonski.
Yes.
Board Member Kaczynski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hartman.
Yes.
And Chair Brinkus.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. Do we have motion to adjourn?
Yes, we have a motion to adjourn. Sorry, I was asleep at the wheel.
I usually don't have to prompt you, Gary. All right, so this, we adjourn this meeting and we'll go right into our regular town meeting for the evening. So if you can call the roll on our regular town meeting, Russell.
Okay, Mayor Brinkus.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Albritton.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Here.
And Councilmember Kaczynski.
Here.
We have a quorum there.
Great, thank you. All right, let's do the pledge.
David.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of, States of America and to the Republic which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. All right.
Mayor, Mayor.
Yes.
If I may, I know the next item on the agenda is waste pro update with Broadway. But prior to that, we have Davie Police Chief Steve Kinsey, who's the new chief. I guess he came into office just before you all did. And we wanted to schedule him to just be able to come on, introduce himself to all of you, to the public, and share a few moments with us. So if you'd indulge your mayor, I want to just turn it over to Chief Kinsey.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's great. Thank you. Chief, are you here?
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you very much, Andy, and I thank you for having me today. It's unfortunate I don't get to do the meet and greet in person, but at some point, hopefully, we'll get to do that. Just wanted to allow you to put a face with a name. I've actually worked with Andy going back to my days at the sheriff's office. Spent, spent my first 21 years at the Fort Lauderdale Police Department. I retired as an assistant chief. I did security at the sheriff's office. I was the undersheriff. Had a short retirement and then got lucky enough to be selected for Davie. So very happy to be here, happy to have Southwest Ranches as a partner. I'm, I'm a neighbor of yours. I've lived in Imagination Farms for 21 years, Davie resident. My daughter goes to Western. My oldest daughter went to Western, and now she's away in college. So I hope to be here for a long time and provide some stability to the police department. And continue to serve the town of Davie and also the town of Southwest Ranches. So I'm available for any questions or, or comments. I'm ready to take notes if need be or answer whatever I can do. And if I don't have the answer, I'll for sure get back to you. Thank you, Andy, for giving this time.
Thank you, Chief. And Mayor, if I could just add one, one more thing, and then I'll turn it over to you to certainly go from there. As the chief mentioned, he and I did work together. We had some overlap while he's with, with VSO. I can tell you that I served on the interview panel in Davie for the chief interviews. And I'm pleased to tell you that Chief Kinsey was my first choice. So I was glad to see him get the position, and I'm excited to work with him again. So I'll turn it over to you at that point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Great, wait, welcome, Chief. We really appreciate you being here and serving our community. Really, really appreciate that. I'll turn it over to the council if they have some comments first that they'd like to. Any comments?
I'd like to say.
Oh, go ahead, Gary.
I'm sorry, not only to step on anybody, I just heard silence.
Yeah, go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, anyway, Chief, welcome to the neighborhood. We certainly appreciate you stepping up to the plate, and we look forward to our future relationship with a lot of zeal and gratitude, and we know you're gonna do a great job. So we feel very confident. Andy has really sung a lot of praises with your name in it, so. And I trust Andy very much, so you know, we're, we're real happy that you're, that you're our chief. Thank you.
Thank you for those kind words, sir, and, and thank you, Andy, for always, always being a proponent of mine.
Yeah, Jim.
All right.
Jim Albritton, newly elected District 3 council member, and I'd like to say welcome here at the town also. Chief, I have a couple of concerns in that I ran on a platform to kind of slow the traffic down and to see if we couldn't stop some of the the cut-throughs through some of the main streets through here. I've met every one of your officers in the field, and I'm gonna tell you straight out, you have a quality group of officers doing the job. I mean, they're top-notch. I think the town this evening might have a way to help them improve, slowing some of the people down with some of the things we'll be doing this evening. But I'd really like to see a, a real commitment from Broward. And I know probably there's a cost involved, but I'd like to see a real commitment to, to really start writing citations for people. I spoke to some of the officers on the motor patrol. They tell me that they really wait till somebody's doing 25 mile, 20 mile an hour over the speed limit before they really write a citation. And in a 25 mile in Arizona, that seems a little bit high to me. I don't say you have to write somebody if they're doing 20, 30 mile an hour or whatever, but if they're doing 35, maybe they should stop them and give them a warning and say, hey, you need to slow it down. This is a residential area here, and we have a lot of kids. I've met with the town administrator, Andy, and I bought a few signs myself that I am gonna be putting out in District 3 to slow the people down if I can. It just simply says it's a small 18 by, 12 by 18 sign, and it just says, you know, children at play, slow down. You know, it's your neighborhood. But that is one of the main concerns, and it doesn't matter if it's my District 3 or if it's out in District 4, District 2, District 1, it's the same problem everywhere. So, you know, I'd just like to see a little bit more, if you could tell me how, commitment to slowing the people down.
Yeah, absolutely. And I could, I could tell you that there's no directive from my office that says you don't have to write people till they go 25 miles over. That's the same speed limit in my neighborhood. We're always looking for compliance. However, a warning doesn't always work. Sometimes the traffic citation exactly where you need to go. So I'm taking notes. I'm paying attention, and I'll make sure not only do you have your officers out there doing that type of enforcement, but also you'll have the traffic union at times. You know, we move them around the town to the hotspots, and your, and your town is gonna be one of those as well. We can move them out there. So I have a note for my staff meeting tomorrow. The way you all can help me and your residents can help me is if, if you can narrow it down to specific locations or specific times, that allows me to put some resources in there. A lot of community say it's between 5:00 and 7:00 PM. Everyone's ready to get home from work. But we can be out there, you know, any times and all the time, but if we can narrow down those, those really bad areas, I can put some extra resources out there as well.
Chief, are you actually writing tickets? Are you? Yep, you are writing tickets.
We absolutely are, yes, sir.
But I saw a lot last month in the reports out on 172nd and out on Griffin Road. There were a number of citations written there. I did not see any on 166 Race Track Way. So, no, I'm just teasing with you, Chief. I, it's, it's a concern all over town. It's not just my area, but it's out, out in West Park, 188, over in Sunshine Ranches also. So, like I said, maybe we can get together and do something. I'd like to also start a committee in town, and I'm working with the administrator and do that with Andy, that maybe I'd like to get a group of six, eight, nine residents from each of the districts, you know, one from each or two from the district. Some of the ways that they think that might help. Like you mentioned, write down the times that the cars come by the fastest, write down the times that people are doing the worst, and, and see if maybe we could have the community help with that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jim. Yeah, Bob. Hi.
Yeah, hi, Chief. My name is Bob Hartman. Welcome and welcome to your new job.
Thank you very much, sir.
So I couldn't be more passionate than Jim, and I think Jim expressed all of our feelings on speeding pretty well. It, it's a chronic problem at this point. I mean, there's people that drive on my street, which is also 25 miles an hour, and it's a narrow road and they drive 70. It's pretty frequent. Let me make a suggestion to you to get out, to get to know the residents a little bit. We have several homeowners associations spread across town, and you have representatives at it every month. Jeff's generally there every month, but it would be great if you could come join him and lend support and, and let people get to know you a little bit as well.
I absolutely will do that. I've, I've actually started that when I first got the job, which was back in September 21st, so it's been just over four months. But that was one of the priorities for me was to meet with the HOAs, to meet with all the school principals, which I think I only have one left, and to meet with a lot of the business owners, some of the civic groups. I met with the Quanis Club. So I absolutely am committed to doing that. I just need the information, and if it's an in-person meeting, that's fine. If it's Zoom, I'll do that as well.
Yeah, there, everybody seems to be doing Zoom right now, and you'd be very welcome. We, the council, all attends every month, all the meetings. We get tremendous feedback, and it would be good for you to learn the passion of our residents as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm committed to doing that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you, Bob. David.
Right. Yeah, okay. Welcome aboard, Chief. I, I think I exchanged a text with you a few weeks ago when we've had the COVID opening and that traffic along Orange Avenue. People were driving, avoiding. Yeah, all right. That's me. Hi. I am newly elected from District 4, the Sunshine Ranches area. And speeding is, is our number one complaint. I hear about it every week. And I was HOA president for four years, and every month, we heard the meetings about people complaining about speeding. The primary areas that have been reported to problems, Sterling Road, and I know we got some rumble strips there. I don't know how effective those may be. I know that I've had complaints on Appaloosa in the mornings. And I think that is also somewhat related to Franklin Academy, where residents are coming, where I guess employees are coming in off of maybe Sheridan, and they're taking the back way off of Volunteer. And then since Lou, since Mustang happens to be the smoothest road, that seems to be the easiest for people to speed on, going from the west to the east in the mornings, going to, going to their work. And, you know, I, I walk my dogs a lot, and, you know, even on Saturdays, I walk and I see these cars just blowing through those stop, stop signs at Hollaty and Mustang, and at Hollaty and Lou Ray. And it's very scary at Lou Ray and Hollaty because, you know, I see bicyclists going by, and they hardly slow down if they're on Hollaty and they're going from north to south or south to north, and the cars coming from the east to the west on Lou Ray, it is just blinded by trees. And I've seen people blow that stop sign, and I'm terrified that one day a bicyclist is gonna get hit or a golf cart is gonna get hit, because, and these are, and I recognize these cars regularly. They're neighbors. And I don't, I, I don't know how to express to them how dangerous it is to our other neighbors that are enjoying the outdoors. Those seem to be the, the primary concerns for the speeding in Sunshine Ranches. But it is, speeding is a very, very big problem. And I, I see your officers in the mornings. I do see them in the mornings. But um, it, I just can't emphasize enough that the speeding is a real, real big problem for us. I really thank you for your time. Thank you for coming out. I hope to see you at the HOA meetings, and I'm here for you if you need it.
Thank you very much, and I took some careful notes there, and I'll make sure Jeff gets all the information to me that I need.
Good, very good. Let me.
Oh, if I can add one more thing.
Sure.
I, I have one more thing. Let me add, Mr. Mayor. One of my neighbors, Ed, at, Ed Gonzalez has told me many times that if you guys wanna park in his driveway, he actually has walled up driveway where an officer can sit in his driveway with, with the radar and sit on Hollaty for a while and run a radar. He's been told me many times, if they wanna come by, they can do it. So if you wanna do that, let me know.
Good to know. Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to add a couple of words onto that. I think you, I think you got the taste that this is a pretty hot topic in our town. You know, having gone through the campaign season, we hear a lot about this. This is really one of the top concerns from residents of our town. So I, I'll just add a couple of other thoughts on top of, I echo everything that fellow council members have said. I just wanna add a couple of things onto that. When we see the, the citations each month, it seems like the vast majority of the citations are issued on Griffin Road, which is fine. But where we experience most of the issues and where most of the dangers are similar to what David was just talking about is really on the interior roads. And I know they're tougher to maybe find those spots where we can be kind of stealthy and, and be effective. But I would really like to see more emphasis on the interior roads in the town, because that's where the real, you know, danger to families and riders and such tends to be. So I would love to see that. The only other thing I would add is I, I think that, you know, in our, as was said earlier, in our HOAs, we regularly hear about kind of hotspots and things like that, and we've done it. We've done a pretty good job of documenting those and putting together schedules. I won't say, you know, putting together those hotspots so that they're hit on a regular basis, not on a scheduled basis. We don't wanna be advertising when we're out there, but but what I, what I'd like to do is, after the fact, maybe get some, get some intel on how those go and maybe start publishing that in the rancher so that, you know, there's some publicity out there that, hey, here in the local area, people are getting tickets because they're speeding. I think maybe with that in the back of their mind, perhaps it'll slow down some folks as well. So all that to say, I, you know, we're excited to have you here. Um, we're excited to partner with you. We're great things, and, and we know that this will be a great partnership working together. So thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Awesome, great, thank you. Okay, we have one other guest with us this evening that I wanted to recognize and give a moment for her to speak with us, and that is Representative Bartleman, Robin. It's wonderful to have you join us here. And I just, before you get started, I think you're gonna talk about this, but I just wanna say firsthand, you have done an amazing job of kind of listening to our concerns and kind of turning those conversations into actions in the right direction. So let me just say thank you right out, right out of the gate, and I won't steal the rest of your thunder. I'll let you, I'll let you get into it. But thank you for joining us, and thank you for always keeping us in mind.
Well, thank you, guys. I'm really happy to be here, and the residents of Southwest Ranches are very lucky to have all of you, because I attended that first meeting. Even one of the residents who made a comment at that meeting, I went and called him. I tracked him down and called him. And that next week, I was out going over all the drainage stations with the South Broward Drainage District with Kevin Hart. I was out at the, I was out at the Everglades at Holiday Park with Ron Bergeron and the South Florida Water Management District. And I got a whole education about everything going on. And so what I have done is I, I went to your city manager and your mayor and your commissioners for the residents out there, and they have actually put in budget appropriation requests to my office to help deal with some of the issues in your community, including a safety guard rail on the Appaloosa Trail, country states drainage and water quality improvement project, and on Southwest, Southwest 63rd Street and Southwest 185th Way, a drainage improvement. So there only, there probably is so much more that needs to be done, but you can only put so much in at a time. This is a very, very tight budget year. There's a $2.7 billion shortfall. Everyone is saying, don't put it in appropriation because it's not gonna get granted, but we're all gonna try anyway. So we're, we're putting them in, and you have a great lobbying team here in Southwest Ranches. So we have submitted your appropriations, and then I have put in an additional appropriation. It turns out that no one has ever asked the South Broward Drainage District if they needed any money to help them. And so I said, Kevin, you've never put in appropriation? He's like, no. So we just, I put in another appropriation, and hopefully, this one will pass because he is matching it at 50%. And it's a regional appropriation for the whole district for two mobile pumps. These are large pumps that when you have a flooding situation, they can move those pumps around and, and drain. Also, something that does impact you, we're looking at seepage issues and pines. We're all interconnected. That's the issue. So Pembroke Pines has put in to deal with seepage, seepage issues along, on the west end of their community. And I did look into that project that Kate told me all about with the Army Corps of Engineers. It is out of, and it is out of engineering. The plans are done, and now we have to lobby the federal government to fund that project, which I am beginning to do. I even put it into the general, put a call into the general. So I'm gonna do everything I can, and I'm gonna do everything I can in Tallahassee, knowing it's a tight budget year, to be able to bring home some dollars. And what I've also done, which is very important, because this is just like repairs. I have filed a bill to address inland and coastal flooding. And what it will do is it will require that data be collected, and you have to project out 50 years of, of, you know, you're gonna collect that data and determine what's going to happen in the next 50 years that pertains to flooding. You know, where we live out on the coast, and the reason you need that data, and it's gonna be turned over to the economic, the economic demographic research team, is because then they can use that data to apply for federal grants, to apply for federal dollars, and also for state grants, but it's something that isn't currently being collected. So I'm adding it to an additional statute where they were collecting data. So hopefully, that will deal, help us deal with the long-range problem. So that's all I have. I just got home from Tallahassee today, a little while ago. So if you guys have any questions, and it has been, I have to tell you, I love your town so much. Your Christmas light extravaganza. I went to every house. It was so much fun. I have never, the commissioners, the councilmen, sorry, the councilmen are amazing. They were out there as well. And it's really, you really have that hometown, small-town feel, and everyone knows everyone. And so I'm gonna definitely do everything I can for you, and you are such an amazing partner with me and a pleasure to work with. So thank you guys so much, and I just appreciate everything you all do for me, and your staff, and your city manager, top-notch. And I have other appropriations, and I can tell you that I got a FedEx book with everything I needed for when I go into committees. It was so impressive. So what you're doing, you're doing right. And to Attorney Polycop, I'm glad you're back. I'm glad you're okay. So thank you, guys.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Let me open it up to the council. Any, any comments or questions for Robin while she's here with us this evening?
Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
This is Gary. How you doing? How you doing, everybody? Good to see you.
Good to see you.
In council member comments, I'm gonna bring up something that pertains to the state of Florida. So I don't know if you're in a rush to get away or.
I have, I have, I have a HOA meeting I have to attend. I can double team it. Just text me when your council member comments, and I'll keep you on on mute, and I'll come back for you.
Okay, it'll be in about 10, 15 probably minutes or so.
Okay, just text me when you're about to speak. And how are you feeling? You're good?
I'm great.
No reaction? Good.
Not yet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie, your mom gets her shot Friday.
Yeah, I'm so excited, excited. Yes, I'm hoping we don't have to, you only waited a little while, right? I'm hoping you don't have to.
An hour each time. I was thrilled. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, my God, I'm so scared. I hope everyone out there is getting their shots. If you're having difficulty, contact my office. Also, we've been helping residents in your city, as a matter of fact, and I'll put it in the, I don't know if you have a chat room here. You don't. But remember, my cell phone is 954-668-3662. My email is robin.bartleman@myfloridahouse.gov, and you can look me up. I've helped a couple of your residents just recently to deal with some unemployment issues, not being able to file a claim, questions about COVID testing. So just please reach out to me. If you're not sure if I'm the one to go to, come to me, and I will give, make sure you get to the person you need to get to. And Jim, I'm glad you're well. Thank you.
I'm good. The wife too. Thank you.
And I'll let you know. I'll text you tomorrow, let you know if we waited an hour. If I'm there three hours, I'm gonna be so angry.
All right, excellent. All right. Thank you, Robin. Thank you for joining us. Really appreciate you setting aside the time for us.
Okay, and just text me for the speaker comments, and I'll go on the HOA one and come back and forth. That's the joy of having an iPhone and a computer at the same time.
Awesome. All right, thank you. Before we get into the next item, I just wanna take one moment to just to recognize, we've had in the last, it's been a while since we got together. And since then, we've had several losses in, in our, on our, related to our staff that I just wanna recognize. You know, we're, to me, when I look at our staff, we're one family. And when, you know, part of our family hurts, we all hurt. And I wanted to just take a moment to recognize that we had, we, we had a rough couple of months here since last time. And so I just, you know, Danielle Cabana lost her uncle. Our officer, Jeff Abalas, lost his father. December, Laurentiana Haynes lost her father. And Russell Minas lost his brother. So that's, that's a tough time, and, and our hearts go out to you. Our prayers go out to you all and your families. We just, we're, you know, we're with you, and we just, we just lift you up. So let me just take, take a moment. And um we just, uh, we just lift you up. So let me just take, take a moment of, of silence just for these uh, these families. Thank you. Great. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. Um, the next item on our agenda is a, we wanted to, uh, we've got a presentation um from Rod uh related to the Waste Pro. And so we've got some representatives from Waste Pro and Rod, I'll just, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So yeah, we prepared uh just a couple of slides. I wouldn't call it a formal presentation, right? But we have a couple of slides that we wanted to share. Um, so if you'll indulge me, I'll go ahead and, and share the screen here. Okay. So there's been some changes to um the Waste Pro uh team and, and the responsive, the responsible parties for administering and managing the contract with Waste Pro. I just wanted to take a, a second here to highlight our team. Um, and if you guys would indulge me, I, I, because I think it's really, really important. I want to recognize these individuals. So uh Emily and I will go ahead and essentially take care of the uh contract administration aspects of it. We'll also take care of the customer service uh aspect relating to the town and vendor coordination. Uh, you guys know Susan very well. She's uh essentially the, the lead person in taking uh the responsibility over the customer service for residents and the town. And then Philip uh is, is essentially our field person and he's doing a lot of um, a lot of the inspections, a lot of the stuff that we have and we have inquiries. So I, I did want to say, when I, when this was first brought to our attention uh and, and Andy and essentially was, was approaching me about the possibility of managing it. Um, I did want to say uh that we had initial discussions that I didn't think that it would work if we didn't have Susan on our team. So I, I do think it's really important to recognize Susan. She is absolutely amazing when it comes to um dealing with issues, calming residents down. Um, because you know, there are a lot of times they're rightfully frustrated and she just does a good job. Um, and she's got so much historical knowledge with the contract and Waste Pro that we thought it was critical that, that she'd be a part of the team and she is. So we're very thankful for that. And just my team in general, um, I, I do want to allow them also just because we got a lot of stuff going on with Certax and you guys know with the capital projects and everything that we got going on. Um, but neither of them were complaining about it. They were very excited. They wanted to hit the ground running. They wanted the opportunity to learn. So I just wanted to recognize them for that because their, their attitude has been absolutely amazing. And without that, I mean, just we, we would have a lot of problems moving forward. So I'm not on this list is um Code, who's also very integral in this success because they're extremely efficient and they help us with a lot of the issues that we have uh with the violations resulting from bulk. And also I really should put Waste Pro here because um I do feel like we're a partnership and they're, they're actually working extremely well with us. So just to go into a little bit of the, of the changes that we've seen here. Um, so strict enforcement of contract. And what I mean by that is there, there's been initially, there was, it's to my understanding, some, some, I guess, gray areas are not really fully understanding and comfort with um certain things. So, so there were some verbal agreements that necessarily weren't in the contract. Um, and specifically like one of those items was the 12 cubic yard limit for bulk trash. And what, what used to happen before was that if the bulk exceeded the 12 cubic yard limit, Waste Pro essentially didn't pick it up because there was a little bit of concern and not a full understanding of how they would get paid for it. Um, so what we did is we really, you know, we tried to roll up our sleeves and, and dig into this contract and get a full understanding of it. Um, and then so, so one of those issues that we recognized early was just, you know, the vast majority of the complaints that we got were, were stemming from this 12 cubic yard excess of, of bulk pile. So we communicated, and again, this next thing is this direct communication with Waste Pro. We started the, the communication with Waste Pro directly. Uh, I speak to, to Sam and his team very regularly, as does Susan. She's got a great relationship with Houghton, who's their on-field person uh and supervisor there. And we just basically started discussing the contract and really um started essentially telling them that there are mechanisms in place for you to get paid. So let's, let's adhere to this contract. Um, and we just built a good rapport and, and comfort level with them. So now we're all basically on the same page, working together. And we've seen a significant result, a, a drastic reduction in complaints, um specifically those relating to the 12 cubic yard excess. Um, and then also here we just have coordinating with Waste Pro staff regarding contract requirements because um it's a, it's a daily thing as far as each of us just learning each other and, and, and then learning exactly what the specific terms are and items are in the contract. Sometimes we have a little bit of a discrepancy with what the definition of something is. You know, we've had very uh productive conversations about uh what construction debris is. Uh, so we also had previous uh issues with, with complaints about that, but I think um our office and Waste Pro are definitely getting uh to consensus as to what we were, we could consider construction debris and, and we're just having a lot less issues as a result of that communication. Um, here is just an example of some of the things that we're doing and implementing. Um, so I talked about the communication piece before, but um on the left side here, it's uh part of the contract requirements was that Waste Pro needed to, to coordinate with us and, and essentially send us documentation of uh the outstanding issues. So um, that's just an example of the spreadsheet that we're getting regularly now from Waste Pro. Uh, and essentially has very good information for us to essentially be able to vet and, and understand where the issues are. Um, some, you know, essentially this Excel spreadsheet has information about case, you know, the, uh, the, the address of the, of, of the homeowner, uh what the issue was, whether it was a non pickup because of excess steel. In this particular case, now we're not getting the XX size, but if it was, you know, non allowable materials or whatever, it's all documented there with status. So we can follow it now closely and our team is essentially monitoring this. And we're coordinating with Waste Pro and trying to get all these items that are on this list resolved. Um, and then you can see here on the right side, it's the, the creation of the, of the, of the layer for our GIS database. So uh Russell was actually very uh instrumental in developing this and helping us with this because he thought it would be a very good idea to essentially try to get an, um, an understanding if some of the issues that we were having were localized, maybe we can identify a driver as part of the issue. Or maybe we can identify something else, right? So uh it's just an example of the dashboard that we've developed. Um, and that we have in place that helps us manage and, and monitor the issues that we have going on right now. And with that, I mean, I'll end my share. I did want to thank uh Kenny and um Kenneth, I'm sorry, and uh Sam for being on. And I, I did want to yield the floor to them, Mayor, if you, if you allow them, uh, because they did want to talk about what they've experienced in, in the change in administration as well.
Absolutely. Thank you, Rod. Yeah, we would love to hear from you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for the opportunity, councilmen and, and Rod and all city staff. This is Ken Rivera with Waste Pro. Um, just to give you a, a little history, um, there in, I've been with Waste Pro for 10 years. Uh, I was the, one of the original um uh GMs that started the uh the division, the local division there. And through those years, we've been able to grow. As a part of that was the, you know, the, the, the award of the town of Southwest Ranches. Um, I've been in the industry 20, 25 years, started uh as a helper in the back of a truck, managed Southwest Ranches with uh, with Sam when it was uh with Waste Management. So we're very well aware of the historical um nature of, of Southwest Ranches. And so when I came back into the GM chair, one of the uh items was this issue regarding the bulk and some of the compliance requirements that um that basically wasn't, you know, done consist, on a consistent basis. And uh through the communication with Rod and Susan and also uh town manager, we were able to come up with, I believe, a, a, a very comprehensive uh way of communicating uh via, you know, electronically. You know, the one thing I want to highlight is the spreadsheet that Rod was showing is our trackee system. And similar to your GIS uh system that it's very, very uh, it's a very great idea to, to track it. This system also that we have tracks every single um issue that comes in, whether it's a complaint or a compliment or a request. You could, you know, it, it geocodes itself into a map, so it has similar capabilities, but uh you know, I was listening to the chief earlier, you know, this is a partnership. Um, I'm here to listen. Sam's here to listen. And uh our, you know, our motto was trying to create a partnership that's a win-win for both, not only for Waste Pro, but most importantly, the residents and the community at large. So really appreciate the opportunity. Um, I'm, you know, very appreciative of the recognition of the um improvements and the reductions and, and, and calls given today's uh new norm where, you know, uh COVID has been and it, you know, has had an effect on us just from a not only a, you know, service, but also an at, uh employee perspective. We've kind of been um over the hump for a while now. We keep everything. Uh, we, you know, we follow all the guidelines. I think that's one of the reasons why we're able to stay away from having a large uh situation of infection. So um again, here to answer any questions, any concerns. Um, and uh, I yield the floor back.
Great, great. Thank you. Thank you. Um, I'll open it up to the council. Any, any comments, questions, anything for, for Ken and Waste Pro? All right. I'll, I do want to say just one, uh, one thing. Um, obviously appreciate you taking the time to be with us and to partner with us. One of the things I was, just a personal experience over the last few months is uh I, I've got a lot of coconut palms on my property. Um, seems like each week there's another one sprouted. So coconuts are growing like crazy over here. And so my coconut pile, my coconut pile is getting larger and larger in the front. And um but your driver, uh, to his credit, um wrote on a scrap of paper that might have fallen out of my trash, but uh that, you know, he recommended that I, I put the coconuts in a large bag rather than just laying them out there. So it was easier to pick up, less digging up over the yard and things like that, which I've done ever since and it's worked out well. My, my point in bringing that up is I'm wondering if there are other things that your drivers are aware of that we could publish out to our residents that are kind of just little tips on um things they'd like to see that will reduce the damage to the properties, be safer, be quicker, um, and um work out better for both parties. And you know, kind of a partnering um view. So I, I don't know if there's, if you have anything like that, uh, or.
Yeah, that's a, that, that, that's a great question. We have a similar um arrangement with one of our municipalities, which is the city of Hollywood. And if you know city of Hollywood, there's a lot of alleyways and, and, and and the overgrowth of the trees become a problem for our trucks. So um one of the things that I know and, you know, in my conversations with the, you know, primarily with the, with the bulk drivers, every once in a while, you know, the regular trash drivers, but the bulk drivers, there are certain spots in the city that um, and we, we, we'll communicate um with uh, with staff about it where the, 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 the pickup becomes a little bit arduous because of they have to watch out for the tree, the line and things like that, and maybe find a better placement of the piles so that it could be a little bit safer, most importantly. Um, and you know, so those are the, you know, we have a couple of spots that they brought to our attention just recently and we're going to go out there and, and first look at it before we even bring it to the staff's attention. So that maybe if we could just figure it out and then go and find out, you know, if it can be possible. So that's the, really the only other, you know, that's the only other thing that I can think of that when we do see our drivers, that's, that's the kind of feedback. So I really appreciate the opportunity to bring, you, you bringing that forward. Um, very rare where you have, you know, um, the city say, hey, how can we help you and how you help us in return? That's a absolutely a commendable uh request. So we definitely will bring that up as they, as we see it. And that way we can uh communicate with the resident and, and create a, a great uh scenario and solution.
Excellent. Very good. Very good. Um, Gary.
Yeah, thank, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mr. Rivera. Um, I, I would like to make a comment if I could, and that deals with the uh bulk pickup. And it just seems to be a common theme throughout the town. I've noticed that and, and I, I do a lot of walking now because I have a lot of, a little bit more time on my hands than I had like a month ago. And uh I see a lot of debris left over from the bulk pickup and whether it's on the road or where the bulk pickup pile used to be. Um, and I, I get a lot of comments, over the fence type comments from neighbors and people on golf carts, et cetera, that are traveling around uh wondering why uh the bulk pickup is so messy uh that are not, not everything is being picked up. And I don't mean the odd palm frond. I'm talking about fairly substantial amount. Uh, like maybe a half a pallet load or something like that. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, that these are comments that the uh residents are giving me throughout my travels uh throughout town, plus from what I see a, as I'm uh walking around and I'm in Rolling Oaks District 2, uh was where, where I, where I live. So I see a lot of that along uh Madison Boulevard and, and the side streets. So I just want to bring it to your attention, sir. That's all.
Thank you. I uh hear you loud and clear and uh taking notes and I'll be meeting with uh Sam in the morning to start addressing these with the crew.
Very good. Great. Thank you. Yeah, Bob.
Yeah, Ken, Bob Hartman here. Um, I think you've responded to me a couple of times uh when I put stuff in on the, the link on our website. So thank you. Um, we, we're talking about a couple of different ways to connect with the town and connect with you on, on issues. I know we've got the button on the website, on the town website. I know uh residents call the town, they call you guys. Uh, we just heard about the Gary Over the Fence Network, which is probably the most effective of all of them. But um there, there, there's another communications mechanism that I'm not sure if you guys monitor and I hate to bring up Facebook, but believe it or not, there's a tremendous amount of traffic about the uh, the residents' views on your, your services. So you may want my, you know, my daughter does it for a living for the company she works for. She monitors social media and tries to address customer concerns. You guys may want to think about that because you don't get a good reputation on Facebook and some of it's not real. Some of it is, you know, people that don't understand the rules, et cetera. But there, there is a lot of criticism that I brought back to uh, to Andy and Rod in the past that I'm seeing on there that I experience in my own neighborhood. So just a recommendation, but I think it would help you uh get a jump on some of these issues.
Yes, a- absolutely. And most often we have t- our, you know, team and our corporate office that monitor, you know, um, and when, you know, when it shows up like a hashtag Waste Pro, you know, they monitor it. It's automatically pops up. But I'd also like to add uh that you mentioned earlier again with police chief about HOAs. Uh, it would be great uh for me to uh start going to the HOA meetings on their schedule. Just number one, if just to say hello and, and, and listen to the concerns or a special meeting for HOAs, just to go over the regular rules and regulations that are out there so that people understand what's going on. Maybe bring them, you know, so.
Andy can provide you with the contact information for the HOAs, their date, all that sort of thing.
Yeah, that, that's, that's, that's the way I like to do it because that's you, that's where the rubber meets the road. And you know, if they have any concerns, I'm right there. Here's my card. Call me direct and uh, and in addition to the, you know, social media and all those other items.
So do you mind me mentioning tomorrow morning that if you've got concerns about Waste Pro on the two uh, the two channels to include hashtag Waste Pro and it'll get the company's attention?
Yes, go. No, no problem.
Thank you. Great. That's all I had, Steve. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Bob. Thank you. Any other um comments from the council? All right. So that was, that was great. Um, I think uh some good, good ideas. I would, I, I love the idea of going out to the HOAs. I think that's fantastic. And um, so we appreciate you being here and, and spending this time with us and kind of sharing ideas. And like I say, we look forward to uh, you know, just always continuing to improve, always continuing to improve.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Yep. Um, I also want to just say, Rod, thank you. Appreciate you uh bringing this item up. Um, you've got a great staff and I'm, you know, really excited that uh that uh, you know, they're all working on it. The, the staff that's assembled to work on this is a great team. Excited to do it. That's great to hear. I know it's important to the residents. It's one of the top issues for the residents and appreciate all their work. Thanks for all they do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right. So let's move on to uh public comment. Open it up for the public to um comment on issues.
Um, Russell, this is Christina Brown. Do you see my hand?
Yes, I, I just called on, yes, sorry.
Oh, I apologize. I apologize.
Saying anything, sorry about that. You're the first two guys. You have three minutes.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, it's really nice to hear from you. It's really nice to hear from you tonight and I've already taken notes to contact the gentleman from Waste Pro. I, I'm addressed well, Chris Brownlow, five zero one Southwest, one forty fifth Avenue, also known as Third Red Lane, coming to you on behalf of our Southwest Ranches Homeowners Association. A thank you to the council and to Detective Hovales and Officer Elliott for attending our HOA meeting last night, as well as our potential new board members. So we had a wonderful meeting. One of the highlights or most significant aspects of the evening was hearing from Marnette Wegman. She's a fifty year resident, fifty year plus resident of the ranches. She has had issues with Phil and I know that she has brought it to the town, she's spoken to me. And even though it's permitted, she's had concerns and she brought this up last night. That just seems excessive and a topic she also shared is that she feels the town might be deviating away from our roots, describing as she said, quote, that we are in an equestrian farm-like rural community. She also has concerns that in recent years, we've got outside developers coming in who don't quite understand or appreciate, you know, our town's genetic makeup. And so it's resulting in homes similar to Boca Raton. And there's no consideration in, they're designating dry space for animals or horses. So she spoke for quite some time. It was important for her to be there and make it. So I want to thank you for listening to her and I wanted to be sure that she was expressed again this evening. For Detective Hovales and Officer Elliott, who's now a granddad to two, they discuss safety, home safety, vehicle safety, personal safety, and particularly spent time on their vacation watch. Our board member, Jason Halberg, pulled up a video and I don't know how many of you have seen it. Well, I know you saw last night. They detect on this home watch, which you sign up for, they don't just drive by your house. This officer got out, went up to the doors, the homeowners have a video cam. He even took a package and hid it, if you will. So it's a wonderful program and they really do their due diligence. So please, anyone listening, contact PD, thank them. I don't know if you know this, Detective Hovales and a few other people spent three hours today rounding up someone's runaway pig. So they are going above and well beyond the call of duty. For us, for our HOA, we really want to encourage our folks to get on our Facebook, sign up for our email. We are doing our best to stay up to date with all pertinent information, whatever relevant, in collaboration with the town, discussing noise ordinances, Phil issues, work with speeding and safety. And you may even see that some residents, particularly on one hundred forty fifth, have actually put down signs, you know, slow down signs. So this echoes what both councilmen, Kozinski and Mayor Bry Crews have had discussed earlier. So thank you all for the time and thank you all for your support for our HOA.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
Yeah, thank you, Chris.
All right, the next speaker, Mayor is George Kalis. Mr. Kalis, can you hear us?
Hey, George.
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead, you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. The, the reason I'm calling is obvious to a lot of you. It's about the dump next door to my residence. I, anything I complain about now, I'll just be reiterating for the past two years. So I had spoke to, in, in the past, I had spoke to Keith Poliakoff and he related to me that his mom lives right down the street over here on Lou Ray and that he passes the house quite often. And he told me that, and I'm sure he's looked into it and I thank you, Keith, but there's nothing that could be done with this neighbor. Right now, I don't know if everyone's come by to even take a look, but some of that stuff he's been dumping is already eight foot high. And I, I really don't know how much higher he can go, but I more or less gave it up. And for me, it's just a dead issue. But in, in the meeting last night, I tuned into the meeting last night and I found out that I'm not in this all by myself. All my neighbors thinks it's a real eyesore. So I, I don't know what could be done. I, I could say this, that when we had the flood and three of my fish wound up back there, Parker, but nevertheless, he, he was high and dry, we were all drowning and he was high and dry. And I invite anyone to come by, if they think I'm wrong, come by, take a look, come down my driveway. That's where you can get the better look at it. I, I, I gave it up, but now I see that my neighbors are in on it and, and they think it's ugly and as a matter of fact, it is. I, well, I have here, I, I want to thank Margaret, Marnette Wegman and Mayor Steve, Laurie Parish, Bob and Judy Parker, for, for what they've been doing. In, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking that maybe we can approach this in a different manner. Maybe we could start citing all those dump trucks that are coming through. They leave all the mud and the dirt on Hancock Road and, and they do speed. So maybe we can harass the dump trucks and, and stop them from bringing all this stuff in. The, obviously the property is shot, there's no value to it. No one will ever buy a dump unless they want to make more dumping. I, I don't know where to go with it, I'm, I'm right back where I started. But the, the property being shot, I'm guessing that he has a mortgage on it. And I'm also guessing that when he's done dumping as much as he can dump on it, he's going to walk out on it. Sunshine Ranches is going to be stuck with this piece of property. I, I, again, I don't know where to go with it. All my neighbors are helping me out and, and as of last night's meeting, I, I see that I'm not the only one in this, all my neighbors hate it. It, it's a dump, it shouldn't be there. And well, that's really all I have to say. Maybe I'll just wait for council members' comments and see if we could pick up and, and start this thing all over again. Because if it stays the way it is, come by, take a look, eight foot high, thousand, at least a thousand truckloads. I'm, I'm finished, thank you.
Yes, great. Thank you, George, I appreciate you coming by.
All right, Mayor, the next person to speak is Jeremy Katzman. Mr. Katzman, can you, you're?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, you have three minutes, sir.
Yeah, hi, I just wanted to say hello. My name's Jeremy Katzman and I am a new candidate for Florida House of Representatives District ninety nine, which is the district that covers the eastern side of Southwest Ranches and touches seven other municipalities in Broward County as well. If, if you're familiar, it's a seat that's currently occupied by Evan Jenny, who's term limited. Just wanted to briefly introduce myself to, and thank you, Mayor and Council for letting me speak. I have a lifetime of personal, professional and community experience. Professionally, my background is in communications and business. I currently am the Director of Business Development at Nova Southeastern University's Health Professions Division. And my focus is developing degree programs and partnerships that help people achieve their dreams of entering the healthcare field. On the personal side, I'm the son of a single mother, the husband of a public school speech pathologist, the father of two young children and an active member in the community. I'm also a cancer survivor, which has helped shape my career and my drive to help others. And I'm your neighbor just over to the west in Cooper City and Embassy Lakes. And I'm also on the planning and zoning board in Cooper City. I've even had the chance of attending a Southwest Ranches or Sunshine Ranches HOA meeting in the past. And I really look forward to meeting with as many residents as possible in Southwest Ranches, which is a beautiful city, a town just adjacent to me. Like I said, I'm just a quick drive or phone call away, highly accessible, here to listen. And I really would love to have the opportunity to earn your support and represent the town of Southwest Ranches in Tallahassee alongside Robin Bartleman, who's doing an amazing job and I'm proud to say has offered her support of my campaign, along with Councilmember Kozinski, Laurie Parish, a variety of mayors, commissioners, school board members and other state representatives. So really, I just want to put my name out there, let you know I'm here, give you my phone number, which is nine five four nine oh one 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 six five, and my email, which is jeremiekatzman@gmail.com. My website is jeremiekatzman.com. And please know that I'm here for you and I would love to speak with you about issues that are important for Southwest Ranches in the state of Florida. Thank you.
Great, great, thank you, Jeremy.
Mayor, the, looks like the final speaker is Debbie Green. Ms. Green, can you hear us?
Yeah. Hi, Debbie. You hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Debbie Green, fifty two oh one Southwest, one ninety ninth Avenue. First off, I don't know if it's a technical issue in why the town is not, like on these Zoom meetings, in the very beginning, you show, we could see all of the council sitting up there just as if we were sitting in, you know, in the public area and it's, and this, so I think it's very helpful. I, I like to see the whole council up there, not just the person speaking. So I can feel like I'm part of our town meeting. And also in that regard, in the very beginning, you used to see the names of every, all the people in the public, the residents that were attending the meeting. I understand the whole, we don't need video and keep everyone muted, but it would be very nice to see the, also our fellow residents that are at the meeting as well. That's that, I was just gonna, just remind everyone as far as the Country Estates HOA that we meet every, the first Monday of every month at Grace Baptist Church at seven PM. So we have a meeting this coming Monday. Also, we'll send an email out to the chief, he's more than welcome to come if it fits in his schedule. I was gonna say, and just in regards to the, um, the speeding, which, you know, echoing everything that all the councilmen pointed out and it's something that's just always, we, we talked about often at our HOA, at the Country Estates HOA meeting in regards to the speeding and on the inner roads. And it's as far as the, when you're looking at ten fifteen miles per hour on a twenty five mile per hour road, the, the rate of speed is a much greater percentage. It's, you know, as opposed to if you're going the same ten or fifteen on a forty five mile per hour road. So I hope that all of that is taken into consideration. I'm the numbers person, so, you know, it's just kind of like if you're on the twenty five mile per hour road and you're going forty, it's only fifteen miles per hour over, but that's a sixty percent increase over the speed limit as opposed to maybe a little over twenty percent on a forty five mile per hour road. And I guess that, thank you.
Great, thank you, Debbie. Anyone else?
I don't see anyone else, Kalis's hand was up earlier, but he spoke already, so it's up to, to you, Mayor.
All right, very good, appreciate it. Board reports, do we have any board reports this evening?
Yes, Mayor, it looks like we have Chris, Chris Brownlow.
Hi, I can't get enough, right?
Welcome back.
Thank you again, gentlemen. I come speaking on behalf of the Parks Board. I have the honor now of being this year's chair. And it's a pleasure because I get to work very closely with December. And we have, we have sat down together and have some plans going forth. Just in case folks don't know what we do, bottom line, we meet and in addressing things on our agenda, we make recommendations to council, which might be on park issues, amenities, improvements, grant proposals, ideas that my residents might bring in, open space and of course, the environment. On our recent agenda, some of the things that we're currently working on and you might see discussed at the next meeting, which by the way, we always meet the second Tuesday of the month at seven and it is still virtual. So here's what we have currently, we're looking at the design parameters for the Country Estates Park and artistic entrance. One or several residents, I believe was one gentleman, made a request for increased basketball amenities at Country Estates Park. So for the next meeting, staff will make recommendations for potential locations in case the board wants to recommend to council to bump the priority status of this request ahead in our grant commitments. Also, there was a resident request for improved trail amenities at Rolling Oaks Park, affectionately called the barn. Staffs met with that resident and the resident has, well, I'm sorry, and staff has recommendations for low cost weights to immediately improve that trail access at that location. In prep for our next meeting, should you attend, you can expect that staff will bring us a list of all parks because not, we have some really great new people on the board. They're not familiar with all of our locations. So staff is going to bring us a list of the parks, the planned park development and grant commitments at each location, the developments built and the list of developments not built. Because then we may be able to set a priority as to what we feel needs to be done. And then lastly, and this is something close to my heart, as many of you right now, might know, we're going into our third year as being a certified community habitat with the National Wildlife Federation. It's a very prestigious award. We share it with our brother and sister towns of Davie and Cooper City. And so what we, I've asked is that we can discuss with board members being more engaged in our annual recertification and to get all of our board members on the Parks Board certified. And I'm going to go so far as to hope that the council members are certified as well. So thank you all for listening and December, if you're there, thank you for all of your help. You are unbelievable and irreplaceable, thank you.
Chris.
Next speaker, Mayor is George Morris.
Morris, can you hear us?
Yes, do you hear me?
Yep. Yes.
Fantastic. George Morris speaking on behalf of the Janich Board, first meeting of the year, twenty twenty one. We had a good meeting, we have seven members this year. We had a short meeting, but nonetheless, George Morris, myself was elected chair. We had Kirk Hobson was elected secretary and James Starkweather was elected vice chair. So it's going to be a very good board, new board moving forward, a lot of experience to go around. We basically had one motion, which was basically to no longer prioritize to the approved certex projects due to we are unable to obtain the right of way. So we kind of moved those to a lower priority, not necessarily taking them off the list, but moving them to a lower priority. And that was pretty much the only motion that pertained to our business. We meet the first Wednesday of each month. Rod Lay is our liaison, does an excellent job, so kudos to him. If any council members, anybody have any questions, feel free to reach out to me, I'm always available. Thank you.
George.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor, the next speaker is Debbie Green.
Great, screen. Welcome back, Debbie.
So I'm speaking on behalf of the Education Advisory Board. And I don't know if you did anything, but now I see everybody because I could see you all before the meeting started. Then I only saw who was speaking and now I see everybody. So yay. I get nervous, sorry. The Education Advisory Board, so. I just wanted to remind everyone that the scholarship for this coming year is now on the, it's on the town website. So anybody, any high school students or even in, in middle school, they can start, you know, you know, getting, volunteering with the town. But the scholarship, the applications up there, if anybody is in the need of hours, we have, you know, many things that can be done, you know, virtually or, you know, and, and in these pandemic. Or, you know, and and in these pandemic times, so if anyone is in need of hours, they can contact Deborah at in Town Hall. And just um, yeah. This pandemic has really hit our our fundraising drastically. Our biggest fundraisers, we're not like the partnering with the Seek Youth and the Run and our Barn Dance. It's just really um hurting and we're just, we're trying our best, we're trying to get creative. So if everyone can just be on the lookout, we'll, we're gonna be um probably sending out some different fundraisers that we're gonna try to do in a safe way. Um. And um, I guess that's it. And if anyone is um, you know, the the. The scholarship fund is always looking for contribution. So if anyone feels that need or, you know, the urge to donate to the education. Fund, they can contact Deborah at Town Hall as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, the next speaker is.
Mayor, may I, may I ask?
Sure. Sure. Yeah, David.
All right, uh Debbie, if you're listening, um, just wanna go on the record that um I will make a one hundred dollar donation to the scholarship fund. I'll be sending out the check uh in the morning.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, um, the next speaker, Mayor, is Jason Holber. Mr. Holber.
Hey, Jason. It looks like you're off mute, but we can't hear you.
Yeah, I don't know if you'd like to try to call in or if we wanna get back to him, but.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get back to him. Is there any other?
There's no other speakers, Mayor, at this time.
Okay, all right. Um, Jason, we'll, we'll get back to you when um maybe uh just as part of, maybe at the end of councilman comments, we'll get back to you. Okay, um, council member comments. Do I have a uh volunteer to go first? Hey, Gary, all right.
I'll go first.
Thank you.
Uh, first off, let me thank uh Representative Robin for hanging in there. Uh, we're, I do really appreciate it. Now, uh, I'll go to your. What would be germane to you first, so uh so you can enjoy the rest of your night. This is something that has just come up recently through a code violation. Um, this is something totally new to me, and if any of the other council members know about it, um, you kept a great secret. It turns out the Florida Legislature in two thousand and sixteen. Were point, uh decided to promote something called agritourism. Um, and it started in two thousand and sixteen and it's on uh state statute five seven zero point eight five. And it's called agritourism, and I'd uh like to read it to you, just bear with me here. This is extremely important for our town. Uh, and we're still in the discovery phase on this, so um there'd be more coming. Um, but let me read you what's come off. This is uh from uh Katie Edwards, uh by the way, our uh one part of our legal team. Um, I'm quoting, "This is the intent of the legislature to promote agritourism as a way to support bona fide agricultural production. By providing a secondary stream of revenue and by educating the general public about the agricultural industry. It is also the intent of the legislature to eliminate duplication of regulatory authority over agritourism as expressed in this section. Except as otherwise provided for in this section and notwithstanding any other provision of a law, a local government. May not adopt or enforce a local ordinance, regulation, rule, or policy that prohibits, restricts, regulates, or otherwise limits. An agritourism activity on land classified as agricultural land under statute one nine three point four six one. This subsection does not limit the powers and duties of a local government to address substantial offsite impacts of agritourism activities. Or the emergency as provided in chapter two fifty two." Basically, what that's saying is if I have an agricultural exemption on my property. I can put up a fruit stand or bring out a pod, a petting zoo and have a rock concert next to it and charge people to come in and. And uh enjoy the agricultural aspects of it. We ran into this at a code, at a code case involving a uh two acre mango uh farm that uh. Probably had three hundred people on it and uh we're charging, I I don't know the exact number, but I can tell you it was probably close to three figures per person to get in. Um, this is something new. To me, it probably. It'll be a very unique situation for our town. Um, Keith, anytime you wanna jump in here, go ahead. Uh, you and I talked about it in the last uh day or so. Um, and uh, if you wanna make a comment on this, go ahead.
Sure, I I mean, council member, I think you you nailed the it right on the head. The Florida Legislature actually did a good thing. They wanted to make sure that the farms in northern Florida. Would uh have a secondary source of income, you know, mainly for weddings and special events that they wanted, people wanted to get married on a farm, wanted to get married in a. Beautiful country setting field, et cetera. The only problem is the Florida Legislature didn't consider that there are ag properties, uh ag in terms of. Property appraiser given ag not zoning uh outside of northern Florida. And the problem in our district, which is, we love the ag community, we love promoting ag and trying to do everything to support ag. But what's happening now is some of them are finding the loophole in the law and having major parties at their property for profit. Uh, which is not an ag use, it's just a money situation uh and is not really promoting an ag use. And uh, so we started out getting major complaints as a result of the parties uh at that mango farm that that advertises online. Come here for weddings, bar mitzvahs, you know, and and events, and the problem is they're sandwiched right between. Two single family homes, you know, uh located on a relatively small parcel and not what the law was geared to. So at some point, we would like our um lobbyist group and and us uh to to meet with you about potentially amending the law. To either A, have a minimum property size uh in it, because that was originally the intent. It wasn't supposed to be a one acre, you know, or a sliver of a a farm. Um, and and B, to maybe make sure that it doesn't impact residential homes that are directly next to it. You know, we strongly support ag, we strongly support the northern Florida ability to to have these weddings and events. It's just uh our community is very unique and it wasn't intended for us, and now we're getting hit as a direct result of it. So I, you know, i- it's just one of those odd situations that we're dealing with now.
Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so uh your town did a great job hiring Katie Edwards because she uh, first of all, she was a state representative. So I look forward to working with you on this. I suspect that uh once we open this up, the ag community will uh be very concerned. So I look forward to sitting down and discussing strategy and what groups we need to uh reach out to. We are, um, you know, tomorrow's the bill filing deadline, so if we're too late for this session, it's definitely something we can work on for next session. So just somebody call me when you're ready to meet, or I can call Katie myself, let me know uh city manager, Mina, how you wanna handle it, and we can definitely look into this. But I think we have to have our ducks in the row, because once you open the statute, the ag community is a. They're a big lobby, they have numerous organizations, so when we define the language, we have to be very careful so we can gain support.
And and actually, as a result of that, we may end up seeking a local bill next, next session, so that it only impacts Southwest Ranches.
That is the best idea, actually, but the lo, I just wanted to say the local bill filing, you know, is much earlier.
It would be.
Yeah, we, we need to begin that probably in the summer, if that's okay, so I can get, because I have to go through the delegation first. And that way, we just voted on all the local bills in January, the final reading, so we'll just start it earlier and I will be here to do that. I I would absolutely propose a local bill, and I look forward to working with you.
And the the second thing just add for the council, I did reach out to our ag commissioner, Nikki Freed, and and explain the issue to her as well. Um, so uh the, everyone is aware of the issue and it was not intended uh really to impact our community, that was never the intent of the law. Uh, so they all seem supportive uh so far in trying to help us um not have that impact on our community.
The safest way Iowa's strategy would, for me, would be to have a local bill. Because then you're not opening it up, because remember, once you amend it and it goes into committees, if somebody wants to add something, change something. It could kill your whole bill or it could turn into something you don't want. So the local bill processes a little cleaner, because it would just be a local bill for Southwest Ranches, which. I would love to do for your town.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I look forward to hearing from you. I'm ready to go on that one. I've got it five seven zero point eight five.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
I appreciate it.
Bringing that to my attention.
Thank you, and you have a great night.
Okay.
Basically, guys, I wanted to uh just continue on with that. Uh, if we could, uh, I need to come to some kind of consensus here. Or I'd like to see a consensus here amongst the council, do we direct uh uh the town attorney and the lobbying team uh, the Southern Group. To move in this direction to uh work with Representative Bartman uh and and crafting a local bill. And I, you know, there's obviously nothing that's gonna happen here in the next day or so. So it, this is something we have to start working on now. Um, for the future and also uh make sure, Andy, if you could, make sure all the information that I've gotten in the last twenty four hours goes out to the rest of the council members. And you'll, when you read it, you'll be, this is really a head scratcher. I mean, it uh, I I see the intent behind it. Uh, as it was produced for the area up in northern Florida, as uh Keith had mentioned, and I can just see the uh, the unbelievable potential for abuse down here. In Southwest Ranches, as you know, we've had many numerous uh parties where we've had hundreds and hundreds of people show up where we've actually brought in helicopters to disperse the crowds over the years. And things of that nature where they've all been pay, pay per, paper party, for lack of a better way of saying it, and you know, with uh. Uh, hundreds of cars, you know, I remember one on Sterling uh six, uh, six months ago, where in the middle of COVID. And there was over three hundred cars on Sterling Road, you know, and a party that materialized at a, in in an hour or two. So it's uh, you know, it's not, this is not a a too far fetched thing. This is a, this is a reality check on our area. And uh, so I'd I'd like to get a consensus that we directed a town attorney to to work on that. Um, everybody just wanna shake your head, say yes.
I would, I would support, I would support a hundred percent.
Thank you.
Jim.
Can I just apologize real quick for giving uh Russell a promotion to city manager? He's the only face I see, like I I see, so I feel like I'm just talking to him. He's like the first one on my little dots. So I, sorry about that. Sorry, Andy.
Not a problem. I, I would be better off with Russell.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question uh of uh Gary or or Ms. Polikoff. Wha- what size property was the one involved with the citation, or did they receive a citation?
Um, what brought this up was that Allegro Mangro Farm uh right off Loray Road. It it, it's not, the the section that's ag is is not that big. I I don't know if Julio's on, he would remember it, but remember when the property appraiser goes in, they only. Designate the area that's ag, so it was only the area where the mango trees were. It wasn't their house or the other area. So the party was confined to the area where the mango trees were growing. And Andy, I don't know if Julio's on, but I don't remember the size right now, but I think it was two acres or less. Oh, I see Julio there now. Julio, do you remember the size of that?
I'll let him answer, yeah.
Yes, hi, uh, good evening, uh, Mayor, Council and uh Keith. So I say a question, yes, the property is approximately a little over two acres. However, the portion that was granted ag was just about an acre and a quarter.
So, well, Councilmember Albrighton, it was an acre and a quarter uh that they were using for major events where Councilmember Jablonski said three hundred cars, and these are all paid events, and and that's the problem. And in that case, they were doing the catering out of the house. So the caterer was in the, in their single family home. Catering and bringing it out to the uh, the area that had ag. So um, there were all sorts of issues, but you know, this is gonna be a new problem, and that's why we wanna correct it now.
So let me just follow up on Gary's uh request. Um, make sure that we're all in favor of this. Um, uh, any concerns? Jim, are you okay with it?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, David?
Yes, I am one hundred percent in favor of this.
Yeah. Bob?
I can, I can hear those parties from my uh home if I'm out in front.
Think you're on mute, Bob, but I think you're on mute.
Sorry, Steve. Yeah, I'm I'm totally for this. We, we have this problem all over town. It's not just in, you know, the specific areas. We had one here not long ago, so yeah, anything we can do to stop these pay uh parties would be great.
Awesome, awesome. I'm definitely in support of this as well. Um, I would love to see this move forward. I really think this is one of those things where. What happens is someone tries, that's not ag, tries to take advantage of ag and it gives bad, you know, it gives ag really a bad name for doing things that. You know, the 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 true folks in town that that live and breathe ag um would not do. Their, their, you know, respectful neighbors and they would not do this. And and so um, this is something that uh. I would love to see kinda nipped in the bud before it gets out of control.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's, you're, you're exactly right. The the people that have the ags that respect the ag wouldn't, but we have to make sure they understand we're not coming after them. It's not in, you know, it's not them that we're coming after, even though it's ag that we're attacking, but it's not them, you know, that's what we have to make sure that they understand.
Exactly.
Yeah, this is uh, the potential for abuse on this is astounding. It could be occurring all over the town from twenty seven out, out through to Flamingo. And I could just see uh, I could just see this getting out of control, and really, there isn't any, anything we can do about it. It's, they're, they're operating within. Uh. You know, within their parameters of of the law. Uh, and and of course, they're pushing it like the uh, uh, Keith was mentioning, like catering out of the house or. You know, something to that effect, because it all has to take place on the agricultural property, but it's real hard to, you know, the average policeman on a Saturday does, is not gonna know the difference between that, and none of us would probably either. You know, it, you know, for all, for all general purposes, we could have another Woodstock on our hands. I mean, it's not, that's not so hard to envision out here when we just uh had a a hundred fifty car, three hundred and fifty person party two weeks ago. They got shut down or tried to get shut down, you know, uh, right over here off of one seventy second. So, you know, people are in this uh COVID nineteen, COVID nineteen environment, they're starving for outside entertainment and, you know, things of that nature. So it's very easy to put it together, and the homeowners, property owners, whoever's putting it on, it's a money making operation for them. I mean, it's like pure profit, you know, uh going for that, because they're not, they're not paying any rent. So anyway, so uh the consensus is that we move forward. Um, Keith, you know, uh, as we discussed, and uh. So if you could get all the information that that you've given me to the rest of the council, then we can go on to that, and. Um, I I have a few other things I need to go over right now. So uh, Representative Robin, thank you for hanging in there, and I really appreciate it, you know, very much.
Thank you, Rob.
Um, the other thing I wanted to talk about was uh, we've got a uh, a dude or some really hard work and uh by our uh administration and our. Uh, engineering department or public works department, we've got a uh, a grant coming for a stormwater master plan, and Andy, I'd like you to. If you could comment on that in depth uh when it gets to your turn. It's uh, it's really, really exciting, good news. It's something we've been trying to do for twenty years and uh. Uh, it's all happening all at once right now at no cost to the town, which is like really fantastic. Um, the other thing I wanna talk about um is our landscaping slash nursery ordinance that was uh torpedoed. Uh, or never saw the light of day. I probably, that's the best way to say it, uh, last year, if we wanna bring that uh, bring that back up. I would like to do that. Uh, if we wanna put it back in front of the comp board, if we wanna discuss it amongst ourselves only. I I'm for any suggestions or any, anything that somebody wants to do with it. We put eighteen, twenty four, thirty six months into it. And uh, it never saw the light of day, which was a real shame. We've had a another. We've had another uh, a nursery buyout of residential home out here out west in country estates. Uh, you know, the one thing that that would have prevented uh, and I can just see a proliferation of that. And, you know, as time goes on and I would like, I would certainly like to bring it back and revisit it. Uh, uh, and I'd like to hear you guys' thoughts on that.
You're here.
Here.
Yeah, David.
Go ahead, Dave. Um, Gary, I absolutely, if um, if everybody remembers during the debate, it was one of my, uh, one of the issues that I really spoke um, uh, in support of is um, bringing resurrecting this. And um, I, I, I would like to um, make a motion that we resurrect the uh, we call it a landscape ordinance and um, that we would send it to the comp plan for one final review.
We need a motion for that, Keith?
Just direction.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're here. I support it.
Well, I would support it.
Yeah, if, if we've got all the support, we just need to send it, you know, um, to send, send it, revive it, send it back and and start discussing on, on uh, moving it forward. But I would like to see that because there was so much effort went into that and it just, you know, so all the air went out of the tire, for lack of a better way of saying it. And I think it's an important, I think it's important to our community that we take a look at that because the uh, you know, I can, when I'm, when I'm out walking every day, I can, the number of landscape trucks uh, that have absolutely nothing to do with anybody who lives here or any way that's just astronomical. You just can't believe how many, how many it is. It's mind boggling. Um, the, my last item that I want to talk about um, deals with fill.
Uh, Gary, before you, before you get there, um, Andy wanted to make a comment, I think, on this item.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Actually, I have a question, uh, which I, I apologize, Councilmember, for not thinking about this when you and I spoke earlier. But listening to direction from council to kick that item back to the comp plan board certainly makes sense. I have no issues with that. What I wanted to point out to you is there were several iterations. It kind of evolved and went through a process where some things were eliminated. I, I would suggest we give them the original version as well as the final, where it was at, just so they can compare. If, if that makes sense to you, unless you just want to pick up with where we, where we were at the end. I just, that's, I just want to get some clarity on that.
Um, hadn't really thought about it.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Steve.
It just hit me, it just kind of hit me now as I was listening to discussion, recognizing that it had changed a little bit over time.
Yeah, yeah, I just, just my thought, I apologize for jumping in, Gary. Um, my, my thought on it is that the, it's been through a lot of iterations. I really personally feel like we were an inch from the goal line um, with the last iteration. Um, I think there were some things that were flat out wrong with it in earlier iterations that we worked through and we got rid of. Um, I personally would rather give them the last iteration and say, let's, there, there was, there, there were, there was one item in particular in the last iteration that came out. Um, that frankly was used to torpedo the whole thing, which, you know, I didn't think was right. I think we send it back to the, the comp board. They tweak that one last item and I think we'll be in, in very good shape.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Use the last, use the last, last version as a starting point. And bring it forward from there. All right, the, the other thing I want to talk about was, is our fill situation. Um, right now, since those November rains, we have a tremendous amount of illegal fill coming into the ranches. Um, I'm, if, well, not, no exaggeration, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty dump trucks on Saturday and Sunday. I mean, this is not rocket science. It's not happening Monday through Friday. It's happening on Saturday and Sunday. It's coming in. I'm not following the trucks. Uh, but it's coming in and, and in such quantities. Everybody is raising their uh, their property, their pastures, uh, what have you. And when, whenever it gets reported or they get caught, basically Co, Code's job is to bring them into compliance. And Code does that and they do a pretty good job of it. And engineering gets comes into play. And they do a pretty good job of that also, but it all depends on if they get caught. Um, our whole philosophy on fill seems to be on compliance and it's not working. It's broken. And I dare anybody in this room, uh, chat room, whatever you want to call it, just to say that it is working because it's not. Um, I think we need to do a complete review of how we handle this from top to bottom. I think we need to throw the baby out with the bath water and start over. Because it is really, really a problem. Um, it's a problem to the point where now properties in my neighborhood, the main drainage area is the street. The street is going to become the canal now because all the properties are high, some properties are higher than the, uh, and I'm talking about front yard, side yard, backyard are all higher now than the street. Then the people are not holding their own water anymore. Since those November rains, I've just seen uh, uh, an astronomical amount of, of fill coming in um, from all over. I don't know who's behind it or, you know, what, what have you, but um, we need, I think we need to completely rework our fill ordinance and how we handle it. I think it needs to be more punitive. It, you know, the compliance part, side of it that Code is operating under and engineering is operating under, it's not working. It's a broken system. It, it's just a matter of if you get caught. And if you get caught, how many loads did you bring in? Well, I, I counted over fifty trucks. Well, that only looks like five trucks. Uh, you know, that, that, that sort of mentality, not mentality, but there, there's, there's no reasonable way to go backwards once the fill is spread. And um, I, I would like to see us, and I don't know if this involves, now there's three of us on this uh, uh, council that have all been chairman of the Drainage and Infrastructure Board. Myself included, Steve and Bob. Okay. Well, um, so we're pretty well versed in all the, how this all got started from back in two thousand and four and how this was brought forward and all the history behind it. And I, I, I would like to see this go back to the Drainage Board with a completely different, I don't want to say attitude, but a completely different vision of what this should look like. And, and I'd like to hear your guys' thoughts on that. Because what we've got right now is broken. It's not working. Um, I, you know, and I'm really, really tired of, of, you know, uh, just seeing truck after truck after truck coming in and filling in all the neighborhoods. And then when it floods, everybody wants to know why. And there's no word, because of why everybody's taking everybody else's water, who, whoever brought in the most fill and didn't get caught. For lack of a better way of saying it, or didn't have to get a permit. And like I said, our major penalty for this is a double permit fee. So that's just the cost. You know, so the, the price of fill went up from twenty-five dollars a yard to twenty-six dollars a yard. You know, or something like that. It's just the cost of doing this. Uh, I'd, I'd like to hear you guys' thoughts on it. I want to start over from scratch and run it and go through the Drainage Board and uh, you know, uh, redo the whole thing with whatever the penalties are, the levels are. Uh, you know, I've, I've always been a proponent of, of making the uh, uh, offender remove the fill before it, the permit is granted. Uh, that's not our current policy. Uh, you know, and people might call that a little draconian. Uh, I don't think so. Not when you see the, the quantities of fill that come in and, and get spread around. And people are doing it uh, because they know there's, there's no, uh, there's no real penalty. They're not going to really pay any kind of a price, you know, to do it, you know. And then the people that, that, that do uh, go out and get a permit and do it all correctly and all that. You know, we, we run them through the mill. Whereas the guy who does, you know, nothing, he gets a slap on the wrist and that's basically about it. So I'd love to hear your, you know, this is my last, I'm out of gas after this item. So, and I apologize for taking a lot of time, but I think this is really, really important. And uh, I'd like to hear what you guys' thoughts are on the fill when it goes around to the other, the other council members. And yes, Robin, there are, there are four other council members who like to talk, including, including the mayor. So uh, I'm, I'm out of gas on that one, guys. Okay.
Thank you, Gary. I did, Bob, I did see your hand go up.
Gary, just a, a thought. Um, it, it seems to me that uh, it might make sense to look at what some of the other cities do. You know, Davie has probably got similar issues. Parkland has probably got similar issues. Um, I don't know how they handle it through their code department. Um, maybe there's some other cities that have good examples as well that still have land to develop that we can look at. Fortunately, on, on the uh, the code, uh, excuse me, on the uh, Drainage Committee, we also have somebody who works for another city. He can also bring some experience in, say, from Miramar. But I'd like to know what others are doing. I mean, we don't need to reinvent the wheel necessarily.
No, no, I, I, I concur with that a hundred percent. I mean, let, let's get, let's get the, the temperature out there, how everybody else is handling it.
Yeah.
I, I agree with that a hundred percent. I mean, we're just, because we have so much acreage and uh, and we're so low, you know, historically, we're lower than everybody else. I mean, uh, you know, remember, if you remember that whole thing that Steve led uh, back, back, back in the day when Pembroke Pines was at four feet and we were at three and a half and we were taking all their water, it was flowing north. You know, that, that sort of thing. So uh, I, I concur with you a hundred percent. You know, that should be part of the process. Bob, Vice Mayor, uh, it should be part of the process, you know, when, when we go back and review this if the council chooses.
Hundred percent support it, Gary.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, Jim.
Uh, Gary, I also support you. And those that aren't doing what they're supposed to do, that deal with the rules don't apply to them. I think we should go and look at them. I do have a couple of questions. What do we do for the people who come in, do the back right thing, but their neighbor next door gets flooded because they built to code? Code says it has to be at a certain level. Their property's not at the level next door because they've been there for thirty years and the property's settled. Would there be any type of relief in that? I know that, like you said, that'd be part of the discussion. For the people to bring in fill so that they could get their property up to the people next door who built according to code, but they're getting flooded next door.
Um, well, not being the, uh, well, the, the answer, the answer I would give off the top of my head is any, any uh, resident here in town or property owner can bring fill in. Uh, they just need to get a permit to do it. So uh, somebody who's low lying and they've got a new home next to them that's ten feet higher than them, um, they could apply for uh, and bring in fill, you know, and work through the engineering department uh, and bring it in. That, that would be their only relief that I could to answer your question, Jim.
David, David, did you want to say anything? I think you're on mute if you did.
Yeah, yeah, I, I did want to add, um, I think um, uh, Mayor and Jim, I, you guys, and I, and I'm sure Bob and Gary, um, are, know Debbie Mantel. Um, and the predicament she is in with the uh, property just to the south of her that um, they just put, brought in so much fill every time it rains. Uh, where her horses are, they're now, uh, their hooves are all in the water and she's got to move them. Um, that's, sounds like this is all right on point that um, it's something that we need to uh, nip in the bud. And um, I support it, Gary. I support you on this.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you, David. Yeah, I, I think I, you know, you brought up uh, some, some really important issues tonight, Gary. I appreciate that. I certainly do support it. I, I do think that um, you know, it's funny, just last night, um, I got invited over to uh, neighbor's house over on two oh one. And uh, Mario and I had a nice conversation and he was trying to do it the right way. He was going through the effort and he was getting the permits and he was paying the fees and he was running downtown to the DEP and he was, he was doing the whole thing and his next stop was going to be over at South Broward to get their signature there. And he says, Steve, it's driving me crazy. He says, I feel like I'm the only guy in town that's following the rules and uh, and it's costing me a bundle and, and I'm still can't get my fill in here. So, so I, I think that this is, this is a carrot and stick approach. I think to, that we need to look at it so that those folks that are going by the rules and are trying to do it right, that we streamline and smooth this thing out and make it as inexpensive as possible. At the, at the end of the day, I think what we're looking for is that people will follow the, our process so we know where the fill is going. We make sure it gets put in in a way that does not, you know, hurt the neighbors or minimizes any impact on the neighbors. It's done right. Um, and that, you know, it promotes doing it the right way. And for those folks that, you know, ignore that, then the stick comes into play and I'm, I'm all for, you know, some of those. You know, we talked about those draconian methods, Gary, that you were talking about, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, we talked about them. So um, so, you know, definitely, I think that's uh, we, we need to look at both sides. I think if we, if we just look at the, the penalty side without trying to smooth out and promote the right side, then I think we've only done half the job. I think we got to do both sides of the equation to get this to work.
Oh, I concur with it. When, when we make it difficult for everybody, they're going to say, why am I doing this when I can just bring in a couple of truckloads and, you know, it's uh, proverbial, it's easier to ask for uh, you know, uh, forgiveness and, and permission, you know, and something like that. I would, I would even go so far and this is controversial, but I would even go so far, we are proactive on fill, but to have a code enforcement officer running around on weekends following the trucks. I, I, I really do. You cannot believe the amount of trucks that are coming in with fill. I mean, it, it's since the November rains, I, I bet it's several hundred that have come in all throughout the town. It's not just where I live, but it's all throughout the town. You can just sit there and hear them go by on Saturday mornings, you know. And they're dumping the loads and they've got a, they've got a, a, an earth mover right there rating. And there's no way to tell, you know, how, how deep, how deep the load is, you know, it's, it's, you know, how much is coming in. So I, I would even go so far as to uh, actively encourage the, the code enforcement on fill only, you know, the, the proactive part of it. So uh, that, that's a matter, I guess, we can discuss with uh, with Andy. If everybody, individual thoughts, you know, when he goes over, goes over it whenever they, they were.
Okay. Great. So I think we have a consensus to do that. Um, great idea, Gary. Love to see that happen.
Okay, I'll shut up now.
You know, and we, we have another hour and a half for you, Gary. So if you want to. No, we appreciate, thanks for, thanks for all that. I appreciate it. Um, I got a note from Jason. I believe that he is uh, now available to comment. So I think if that's all right, we'll switch over to Jason and here's his comment.
Yes, uh, hey, guys, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, love technology, but sometimes uh, it doesn't always work the way you want it to. So appreciate you uh, working with me on that. So uh, Jason Halberg, on behalf of the Comprehensive Planning Board, um, excited and honored to be nominated as the chair. I'm not sure what the board uh, knows, uh, but what they got in, what they got into here nominating me, but of course, you know, I'll do my best. Um, all kidding aside, uh, we have some great folks on this board, uh, lots of diverse backgrounds. Um, I think they'll be able to add some tremendous value uh, to some of our discussions coming up. Uh, for those who don't know, um, our board meets uh, the third Thursday of each month. Uh, always encouraging uh, whoever has interest, residents, you know, of course, the council, appreciate that. You guys joining, uh, you know, obviously to come and share any, any feedback. Um, you know, keeping in spirits with our roots as a rural equestrian community as well as with the direction of, you know, the council, be, uh, feedback from residents. The board is currently working on coming up with requirements that would help mitigate high density residential developments from happening within the ranches. Uh, we're hoping to establish uh, criteria for all properties to set aside a certain amount of land to have room for animals and horses, you know, such as barns and paddocks. Um, even though we're early in our discussions, um, I feel pretty confident that we'll do, make, we'll make some good progress over the next few meetings. Um, and uh, you know, in follow up to Gary's comment uh, regarding the nursery ordinance, uh, landscape ordinance. Uh, you know, the comprehensive board, uh, we'd be more than happy to take that back on and uh, work through any issues. Uh, of course, we'll make sure to work closely with the council for direction as well as the community. You know, we want to get it right and uh, you know, again, uh, happy to support uh, any direction you guys give us. And that's all I really have. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jason. And if I could just um, make a request along those lines, when that landscape ordinance comes back to you. Um, if you could maybe, because that has been around a long time and it's been kicked around and I think it's very close. If you, if you all could maybe prioritize that and um, hopefully in a meeting or two, could send it back our way.
Absolutely. Understood. It's been a long process. I know the comp board's already worked through it for, it's probably been two years. Uh, I think uh, you know, along with your comments, uh, you know, we're, I think we're pretty close. Uh, but again, we'll want to make sure it's right and we'll work expeditiously, expeditiously through it. So.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, um, back to council member comments. Who'd like to go next? All right. Thank you, David.
Hey, all right. Um, I'm being nearly as long as Gary, but I do have some issues that, um, I think, um, bear, um, talking about. Uh, one of the questions that just kind of came to mind, uh, with the issues that Gary had mentioned. Um, and I was under the belief that we still have a weekend code enforcement. Is that still going on? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Andy. I, I just wanted to make sure of that. All right. Um, with regard to, um, our landscape ordinance, um, one of the issues that I think, um, uh, was kind of important for, uh, some of the people that I spoke with is, um, returning the ordinance to its original intent of regulating the landscape companies and, and the nurseries like that and removing the language that was onerous to the farms. Um, I know that the horse trailer, um, thing is just kind of, I don't know even how that got in there. Um, the thought that how do you have a, if you have one horse, how do you have a one horse horse trailer? They don't exist. As, I mean, some of those things there just didn't make sense to me. So I would like to, um, have it targeted back toward the original intent. All right. Um, now, some of the issues that I wanted to also add, um, our town is unique that we have a dark skies ordinance. Um, this is, uh, part of keeping us rural. It, it's part of the, it contributes to the equestrian culture that, you know, we're, we're dark at night. We don't have the lights that, um, can irritate our horses. And it's something, you fly, uh, flying to Fort Lauderdale Airport and you look over to the south and you look and you see one dark patch. Guess who that is? Us. That's us. And I like that. That's, that's what I, I'm proud of that. And I would like to, um, see a little more proactive enforcement of the dark skies. And, uh, I'm, I know there's neighbors that put lights to make their homes look very pretty and maybe in Weston, Pembroke Pines, it looks pretty, but maybe they don't realize that their lighting, uh, is in violation. Um, so I don't want to like say start slapping out fines, but maybe notify them to, hey, you know, your lighting may be a little, uh, maybe in violation and you should take a look at it and consult with the town about how it should be cured. Uh, I've always been a proponent of trying to work things out first before, um, taking aggressive action. Speeding, um, we talked about that earlier. One of the problems with speeding is, uh, you know, there's animals that are out there. And, uh, I, I'm going to say that, um, next month is a reminder of something I actually witnessed one time when a dog got ran over by somebody speeding. It was, to this day, it really hurts me. It, just thinking about it was very painful to watch that. And, um, I think speeding enforcement is something that, um, is important. And I, uh, the HOA last night, Sunshine Ranch's HOA, um, there was a comment about, um, the possibility of putting, uh, speed bumps along Sterling Road. Um, I remember, um, I guess in the last four years, I heard a comment from the council, um, and none of the members that are there now that, uh, maybe we should raise the speed limit on Sterling Road. And I was appalled. Um, I heard forty miles an hour and I was appalled. Um, I, I said, no. So, um, maybe, uh, it's something that we can look at. Um, and, and I would like to take into consideration the impact on ambulance services and law enforcement before we go, uh, into, um, implementing anything like that. Um, as for, um, the Comprehensive Plan Committee, uh, one of the issues that I discussed, I brought up, and I'd like to, um, know a little bit more about this. Uh, in Sunshine Ranches, most of the properties are zoned rural ranches. Ten acre, uh, or ten percent build outs on them. And my concern is that if, and there's, uh, the, the empty lots are drying up. And, um, you know, people's, people are coming out saying, hey, I want to divide my property. I'm going to divide my property here, there, here, there. And if you have a five, five acre parcel and on that five acre parcel, landowner, uh, build it out ten percent according to the five acre. But then they want to chop off half of their property and now they have two and a half acres. And, um, I just want to know what kind of mechanisms are in place that would notify a potential buyer of that property? There's a requirement of the original property owner or what kind of, uh, procedures are in place to let them know that, hey, you, you're, your original property owner who separated the property exceeded the amount for a two and a half acre by building out at a five acre rate. So it would be a, a non-buildable lot. So that's, uh, one issue that I really, really, um, would like to know a lot more about, addressed maybe in the comp plan, something to that degree. And, um, and I'd like to invite everybody to come out and, uh, join in on the Comprehensive Plan Committee. Because, you know, we're talking about land development and that's something that affects every one of us as a homeowner in Sauteris Ranches. And, um, we have to fight to preserve our rural lifestyle. So that kind of wraps up my concerns for the evening. Um, thank you.
Great. Thank you, David. Yeah, Andy?
Yeah, Mayor, two things. One is I know Jeff Kadam's is on, so I know he can answer some of, uh, council members, Kuzinski's questions on, on waivers of plats, dividing lots. Uh, the other thing is the council member did bring up a comment where I think he was asking you all to go proactive on the dark skies ordinance. But I know nobody weighed in. So I, I wanted to just back up to that council member. I, I thought that's what you're asking the, the council.
That's what I meant. That is what I meant. Um, if, if I could get some, um, input from the council on the, um, dark skies ordinance and, uh, being a little more proactive on there. Um, is there, um, if I get some, uh, people?
I'll, I'll jump in, David. I've, I've, uh, had numerous cases around here in, uh, Rolling Oaks. Um, and of course, this is something you only see at night. Uh, you know, and, uh, where new residents have moved in and, uh, LED lighting is, uh, very inexpensive now and it's very efficient and it's extremely bright. And basically you could read a newspaper a mile away, you know, from, uh, their, the, the lights they put around their house or at the front gate or, you know, at their driveway or that, that sort of thing. And we've had, uh, uh, code enforcement come out and they've had to lower their, lower the temperature of the lights, for lack of a better way of saying it. I've had several instances where that's happened. And I know, uh, uh, Councilman Albritton can, uh, attest to this personally with, with his situation with, uh, that he had across the street from him, if he wants to weigh in on it at any time. But yeah, I fully support that. Which is the, the problem we have with it is it's all done at nighttime. And, uh, usually it's one of us that are running around going, wow, that's really bright. And then calling Andy the next morning, you know, and to, uh, investigate it, you know? And then they have to go through a light, a light meter test and all that. But I fully support it. It's just how, you know, a ma- a matter of how, how we, how do we introduce the mechanism to make that, uh, work all the time?
Yeah, let's, um, uh, Jim, Bob, any, um, comments on that?
Yeah, Gary, uh, uh, our, my problem across the street thing, uh, thankfully got resolved through the, uh, code. And I thank code a lot for coming out. They were out here at night. Uh, I thought that the problem had been pretty much settled. It was still a, a little. And they came out and said, no, it hasn't met what they had agreed upon. So they did fix that. I do have a couple of questions about security lights. If someone has security lights around their home that are on motion sensors and those sensors go off sometimes during the night. I don't know if it's for the wind because the palm tree lit blue or could somebody walking through the yard. That's really not what we're talking about. We're talking about the people that pretty much light up their house and it stays lit all night. Whether for decoration or for them, it may be for security. Uh, I mean, how would we differentiate from that? Uh, if somebody was doing it for security or somebody was doing it just to be landscaping and making it pretty? I mean, there's got to be some way there that you can protect your home, but not be invasive on your neighbor.
Yeah. Bob?
I, I think it's a good idea. We, uh, once upon a time, uh, it was pretty dark here at night. My daughter was out last week and she's like, Daddy, you can't see the stars as well anymore. Case closed. It's the cumulative amount of light, you know? And, and how do you find these people out at night? Uh, I can tell you, there's one not far from me that when I drive past that house at night, I lose my night vision. That says it all right there. I mean, it's, it's too powerful and they're pointed at the road. So, you know, I'm sure I'm not the only one.
Yeah, I, I, I agree as well. I think it is something that, you know, we've been reactive on it, um, ever since we've been in town. I don't think it's worked. I think it is time to be proactive on it. It's just, uh, um, something that it's, it's, it's a growing problem more and more. And, um, um, yeah, I definitely support it, David. Appreciate you bringing it up.
Bob, real quick, the house that you're talking about, do they stay on all the time or do you notice that they're on and off?
They, they're not, uh, motion sensors. They're lights that go on just after sunset. And I believe they're on a timer because I left the house last week at about five in the morning and they were all off. So they must be on a timer.
You know, a lot of times, uh, Jim, I would say this for the security, that it's not so much how bright the light is per se. It's, it's whether it's shining, whether it's got the cover on it to keep the light from spreading, um, whether it's directed properly, you know? Um, if, if you've got a door that, you know, you're concerned about or a side that has a door and a window that you're concerned about, you know, you can put a very, a pretty bright light on there for security, but it has the shielding on it so that it's only going to light that area that we're concerned about, you know, that, that, from a security standpoint, we're securing, cared about. And it, and it doesn't, doesn't really impact the dark sky. So.
To mention motion activated lighting.
Yeah, yeah. So I think there are some things where it's not one or the other. I think there's some things, if it's done right, it, it can accomplish both.
Okay, David, was there anything else on your list?
Uh, no, that kind of wraps it up, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, very good job. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Thank you.
Jim, if you'd like to go next, I, uh, I got a couple of things I need to cover and one of them's going to take a little while.
Yeah, Bob, I won't take it but about a minute. Uh, I'd like to congratulate all the, uh, new board members that came on board. We have a lot of brand new faces, people that stepped up as citizens and decided that they wanted to be a part of the town. And I'm very proud of those people. Uh, congratulations to the, um, new chairman on the board. I know, uh, that they're going to do a great job for us. And when we turn these issues back to them, they're going to give it full attention. And, and I think we'll come up with some great ideas and some great things to put forward. Uh, the speeding issue, everybody's talked about. And, and like I mentioned earlier at the very beginning, I, I do have signs that will be going up in District Three. I, I don't have enough to go around town just yet. Uh, then you do ask people to slow down. And, uh, that and, and maybe something that we're doing here this evening in the future to help the police officers will slow the traffic down. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jim. Vice Mayor?
So, um, just a quick housekeeping item. I believe when, uh, Debbie Green invited people to the Country Estates meeting earlier, she said that, uh, we meet at Grace Baptist Church. Under normal circumstances, we do, but it's virtual right now. So if you would like, uh, Debbie to send an invite to the meeting so that you can attend, send her an email at P H I N S, Finns, but with, uh, without the Dolphins on it, without the doll. Uh, Finns thirteen at AOL dot com. And I know Debbie, get right back to you or look, uh, look, uh, Country Estates up on Facebook. There's contact information in there as well to get an invite. All right. Uh, something I, I, I wanted to, uh, uh, bring up tonight that I think is a milestone that I know was a challenge also to achieve. I believe back during, uh, the campaigns, David had, uh, raised a concern that, you know, the, the, uh, documentation that the council and the residents, uh, get, uh, before the council meetings in the past have always been distributed a week in advance. Now to move it up a week doesn't just mean you start everything a week earlier. It's, it's a lot of moving parts that have to be changed. Deadlines have to be changed. Deadlines in these various areas tie into other things. So the staff has done a great job and I want to commend them on being able to move this out so that we can get the agenda a week early. So we'll, in the future, get it two weeks before the council meeting. It'll also be available, uh, um, you know, to the public at that point. And David's reasoning for this, I supported, you know, a lot of things that come up. It takes a little bit of time to get your neighbors motivated, moving forward on this. And when you've only got the, the agenda coming out the Friday before, it, you know, it's a week. It, it never seems like it's enough time. So this gives the residents an opportunity if, if we're do- doing something that they have concerns about to organize or to support either way. But, um, you know, the important thing is now you can read it, digest it, call some people, get that, get it out to them and, and, you know, mobilize. And I know that that was really important when the residents were fighting tractor supply and some of those types of issues. You know, if you only find out about it a couple of days before the meeting, it's, it's kind of tough to get everybody with their busy schedules together. So kudos to the team. Thank you very much to the administration team. Uh, next item, Rod, thanks for the, uh, the Waste Pro update. Um, I'm glad you've got responsibility for it, uh, and, and, uh, you've, you've, you've taken great ownership of it. Uh, I want to keep talking to you about it because I, I kind of raised this a few months ago. And, you know, I think you're doing a great job, but, um, you know, a little bit here and there, just some comments or questions for you. So thank you on that. Uh, another item that was new for me today, uh, I went to my first MPO meeting. And, you know, um, there's a couple of things that were kind of interesting. First off, uh, Mayor Frank Ordus is the chair. So sitting and listening to him for two and a half hours was a first for me. Uh, but also Patty Good is the vice chair. And most of the elected officials that you know their names, whether they're county commissioners, school board, et cetera. They're all engaged. Uh, on this meeting today, there were about a hundred and fifty people. So, you know, it, it means a lot. I also found out that we really haven't been represented in about a year and a half on the council side. Uh, on the staff side, I believe that we send people to the Technical Advisory Council. We have, we provide input as the town administration. But I'm there now to learn the ropes. I, I went through the orientation last week. Uh, I went through my first meeting today. They're run very professionally. There are a lot of questions that come up. One of the things I found very interesting is they're going to spend an extra hundred thousand dollars this year on a, on Holland and Knight to lobby at the federal level because they figure with all the stimulus, stimulus money, uh, coming forward, they'll probably be the same call for shovel ready projects and, you know, infrastructure projects. The Biden administration and, uh, Petaria Transportation Buttigieg are both definitely putting out the messages that they want to invest in infrastructure as part of the recovery. So, you know, if all that money is going to be out there, I want to make sure we get our fair share. Uh, you know, I think we've been pretty good with, and the, the team has done a great job on the Broward Transit Tax, uh, uh, money we got this year. And I think that'll probably be the primary way we get our work done. But they, we have things on the MPO's agenda that are just out there in twenty thirty-five and twenty forty-five. And some of those things may make sense out that far, but there might be some other things that we might want to pull in a little further. So I will be there to, you know, uh, advocate or anything we want to, uh, uh, you know, ask for. I know Andy's got a list together. We're going to meet on it next week. And I'll be better prepared when I show up at these meetings to discuss our needs and issues. So you've got my commitment. I'll try to get whatever we can get. Because, uh, these cities are contending for the money and they're doing cool things with the money. You know, this isn't necessarily a traditional transportation project, but, uh, Andy's old employer was talking, uh, uh, about, uh, uh, basically a trail system that they've cooperated with all the cities to the east. So now a trail that goes from the ocean all the way to the Everglades. That's, uh, I'm referring to the entrance at, uh, Commercial and the Sawgrass. Uh, that's all been built out using MPO money. We've got trails. Maybe we could find some money for, you know, improving our trail system or requiring additional trails or whatever. I'm, I'm just throwing things out there. I'm new to it. I'm excited. So, uh, that, that's the cool, that, that was the cool thing for today, going to that meeting. And, and really hearing, they're getting a tremendous amount of done and they have a lot of influence too. They have a say in the Broward, uh, MPO, excuse me, the Broward, uh, F dot, uh, budget and how the money's spent. They also have a say in any Turnpike Authority money that's going to be spent within Broward County. So there's a lot more reach than I expected with this organization. So. there's a lot more reach than I expected with this organization. So, like I said, I'll I'll be attending um until you guys tell me to stop. All right. So the reason I mentioned I needed some time is I need to discuss an issue with you guys. I'm gonna share my screen. So bear with me a second. All right, and I'm gonna share screen one. So what I want to bring to your attention tonight is something that I've been working with Keith um and others on for quite a while, Julio as well. We have an issue one, one ninety eighth terrace and I I'll read this to you. A veterinary clinic is operating seven by twenty-four in the middle of a residential neighborhood. The residents impacted are reporting that these commercial activities are dramatically impacting their quality of life. The veterinary services are provided around the clock on an ongoing and and ongoing unpermitted development have increased traffic and damage to one ninety eighth terrace, a private road, damage to neighborhood properties, vandalism, noise complaints from dog barking, vehicle activity, and all sorts of other non-residential activities. The property owners have a list of unresolved code violations and visits from the police. And I want to make sure everybody's aware, full disclosure, this person is my next door neighbor. And now this isn't neighbor on neighbor fighting because I've only met the man once. Um, he uh came over here one day saying that he has a uh some sort of exotic pheasant that's loose in my backyard. Would I mind? He put a trap in and I said, no problem. I've never spoken to him again since then. The information that I'm gonna give you is coming from the neighbors on one ninety eighth terrace. They've organized now and they are really very, very upset about this, the situation. Um, again, I I've had nothing to do with this guy. I don't know him. He uh, he's uh, you know, I have no relationship with him whatsoever, even though he's the next door neighbor. So let me go through some of the information here that I've gotten again from neighbors. There's been a significant impact on the neighborhood by this business. Can you got, uh, you, you, I should have asked, can you guys see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay. All right. So the impact on the neighborhood is gotten to be pretty substantial and I'll I'll go through the details. So what what this person brought in is a twenty-three foot mobile veterinary clinic. They're widely used. Uh, it's about the same size as a small U-Haul moving truck, twenty-three footer. Um, they're the most popular. I actually reached out to Magnum Mobile to find out more information about this stuff so I could I could speak to it. And I I asked them, you know, are these things typically parked? Or are they used, you know, as mobile purposes? And and you, according to them, they're typically used for visits to client locations. You know, if you, if you're a commercial dog breeder and you've got fifty dogs, you're not taking them to the vet. The vet comes to see you. Um, in rural areas like central North Florida, once you get outside of the cities, a lot of these vets use these specifically to go visit their clients. You know, they'll arrange Mondays to be on the west side of town, Tuesdays to be in the middle of the town and uh you know, Thursday, Friday are are out into the country and and that's what they use these mobile vet clinics for. They can use them for, you know, the usual small animals and they can also use them for small livestock like uh you know, goats and and uh and 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 smaller farm animals. Uh, you know, if they are parked, they're typically used at local malls. There'll be a flea markets when the flea markets are open or special events like, you know, dog shows and and uh various types of activities like that. So there's definitely a purpose and a place for these, these types of veterinary clinics. The problem is this person is using it in the neighborhood. I don't recall this thing having moved and and the neighbors say the same thing since he moved in there. Um, this is up on his driveway and what you're seeing is a small fraction of client vehicles parked on the property. So he operates this thing daily and I I've got all the information, so I'll walk through it. There are two vets practicing there right now. Caesar Morales is the guy that I met that one day and I've never met the second veterinarian. This is information pulled down from the Department of uh Business Professional Regulation. Uh, it was easy to look these things up. Uh, there's some other notable information on here in that both of these veterinarians are uh on probation for something that they did prior to ten, five, ten, eight timeframe of two thousand and eighteen, which they were operating on one ninety eighth terrace at that point. But I don't have any other further details, but there are two vets operating there uh uh at least as far as the state is concerned. Now, the veterinary operations, everything you're seeing here came off of Facebook. You know, they, he, he is operating according to what he's advertising, five days a week. He's open Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And he's closed Wednesday and Sundays except for C-sections and inseminations for their clients. And if you look over to the next page on the days he's closed or after hours, so in other words, outside of office hours, for an extra thousand dollars, he'll do a C-section for your dog. And for sperm evaluations and all semen evaluations on dogs and all the rest, that's part of his business model as well. Now, the neighbors backed this up with the fact that we have considerable traffic on our road and I've got some pictures for you. And as well, it's not uncommon to see somebody pulling in there at ten, eleven o'clock at night. The vet clinic seems to have its lights on seven by twenty-four, but I don't know why he does that, but there's always customers coming in going. This is not a small operation. So there, you know, some of the things, again, this is off his website, some of the things the the neighbors are bringing to concern is nobody's sure whether that's a hundred and fifty gallon liquid oxygen tank or a hundred and fifty gallon nitrogen tank, but it's in a residential neighborhood. And I'm not sure if folks caught the news today, but five people were killed in a food processing plant where the nitrogen tank exploded. So I, you know, he's got sometimes fifteen, twenty people standing around that exact area. And we've got a tank that my guess is is not, you know, permitted or the county doesn't even know it's or the state doesn't even know it's there. So moving on, this is the typical activity. Uh, you know, the vehicle traffic starts early. My, one of my neighbors tells me and she lives very close that, you know, cars start lining up on our street and I've seen this when I leave early. Seven o'clock in the morning, he doesn't open until nine. Sometimes we'll have twenty or thirty cars sitting on the street. Uh, what you see in the top left is just what it looks like there on a typical Saturday morning. On the right is, and these were sent to me by a neighbor. You'll note on on here, I have a note. The neighbor who provided me these images moved out of town. He moved out of Southwest Ranches because he saw this happening and the town not doing anything, even though he's my next door neighbor and I talked to him about it regularly. He didn't, he was worried about his property values. So they moved daddy here about a little over a month ago. Uh, looking to lower left, you know, it's COVID. Uh, it doesn't matter. This guy has tons of people on his property, some with masks, some without, but all through the pandemic, uh, they were not observing any of the guidelines. And then the the lower right picture is is just kind of a representation of uh, it's it's not even a good picture, but it shows you the number of cars that are always there. Uh, some of the statistics that they've given me is that there's between fifteen and twenty cars parked on the property at any given time. They come and go day and night. Cars recycle about once an hour. So, you know, if he's meeting with that kind of clientele, he's got a thriving business. Uh, the the big problem that the the neighbors are concerned about are it's constantly barking dogs, dogs fighting, car noises, people shouting anytime, day or night. And uh, this, that, you know, it's there, there was a point where I could tell the neighbors the town is working on it when Keith was pursuing some of the code enforcement violations to, uh, I shouldn't say Keith, but the uh, the town was uh pursuing code enforcement violations against these guys, which we thought and hoped would slow them down. Hasn't slowed him down a bit. So now, you know, the other things the residents point out are some of the legal issues that I've actually brought up here that we really haven't been able to resolve for a whole host of reasons. So this guy, the this, this particular property, uh, as far as we know, has three people living there. And twice a week, they're throwing out six garbage pails of debris. They have no contract for commercial waste pickup or more specifically biomedical waste pickup, which they're required to do by law. You know, they're they're throwing out six ninety-six gallon pails twice a week. I don't know anybody who throws that much out. And then also you'll notice in the picture, there is a white specimen box like you see outside of a lot of doctors' offices. By law, that's actually hazmat. It can't be sitting on the ground there. It's got very specific regulations in terms of where it needs to be placed or hung or what have you, but that's not the right way. Now, the reason I'm bringing this up is this is hazmat. This is biomedical waste. And I looked up the definition and this is, this is geared to veterinarians that are supposed to be responsible. And basically they fall into the category of of biomedical waste because it's veterinary wastes and discarded sharps. And this guy also does surgery, so the little bullet point items are all the things he uses in surgery that are also biomedical waste. So, you know, it it's important to understand that this guy is contributing to our waste stream, potentially to the Broward County landfill right over the fence here, biomedical waste that's not being treated properly. Now, the reason this is pretty important, I mean, there's forty-four thousand facilities across Florida that generate it and they comply. You know, and veterinarians are part of that population or that community of providers. They're called waste generators and they have very specific requirements. They can't just call their their Uncle Joe and have him pick this stuff up and dump it at the dump. They have to use licensed providers that will haul this stuff off and not dump it on a corner lot somewhere, but go through the whole process of incineration, et cetera. This is, he's supposed to have a permit according to state law, which they're supposed to file annually and, you know, maintain. So I don't know if they need to have uh, any kind of permits on garbage. I'm not a lawyer. I'm just telling you what I've seen and what's been brought to my attention. And uh, the same thing with the uh tank that they're not sure if it's liquid oxygen or liquid nitrogen. Uh, we've talked enough about that in council meetings on how those types of vessels are regulated. And uh I am not sure if he has any uh, any permits or has followed the regulatory requirements that he's required to file as a vet, uh, to uh fulfill as a vet. So then on top of uh, you know, these types of issues, the biggest concern the neighborhood has is that he is building out a full-fledged veterinary hospital. He is currently building out other facilities on the property. Uh, in the beginning, the neighbors were contacting me and saying, hey, Bob, I see this going on. He's filling, uh, so I'd say call code enforcement. There's one neighbor who's been pretty vocal because every time we get a minor amount of rain, all this guy's property drains onto his behind him. And uh, that resident is in Pembroke Pines, but he still deserves relief from flooding regardless of where the water's coming from. Uh, you know, the the code compliance issues are just continuously ongoing and I I've I've got some information again to show you there. So the property was purchased in uh January of two thousand and sixteen. It's got three property owners on the uh, on the uh, the title and the deed and it is not agricultural property. However, the uh, the uh Broward Property Appraisers Office does note that he has pole barns on there and their horse barns and then the other usual things the house has had. So effectively, um, it it was an agricultural property. I'll show you about that and it it uh, it's changed pretty dramatically over time. So this prop, this, this property was owned prior by uh uh, my next door neighbor, Iron. Um, unfortunately, he and his wife had a family catastrophe where they lost their son in the Keys and their their world fell apart. They sold this place. They they downsized. They did a whole bunch of things after their son died in the crash. But what's important to bring up is this was, they had ag. Um, if you can see my cursor, can you see my cursor now on the screen? So in the middle, these were the two horse barns Iron built. And there's a dog kennel in here because he tried that as a business once. Uh, he was trying to be a breeder and then he had a couple of trailers. His father lived in here. I mean, this property was maintained by his father who was a real old school cave Cuban cane cutter. So he was totally at home back here and he maintained the landscape nursery. He maintained the horses. You can see a couple of horse paddocks here. There used to be a lunging ring, but then they built another paddock in here. You can see it's covered in landscape. It was originally a liner nursery, but uh they couldn't sell the liners, so they put a lot of this stuff in the ground. So you'll see palms, you'll see all sorts of things. But uh, so this is the condition it was in more or less when when Iron sold it. Uh, and just something notable, there's been some some responses by the property owner that they were re-asphalting, repairing a road. This is tailings from asphalt milling when F dot of the county does their uh uh, when they, when they mill a road to resurface it, you know, that's when they use that machine to grind it down. They put it in a dump truck. Once upon a time, they used to give that stuff away for free. You just had to pay for the truck. Now Weekly buys it from them so he can put it in the front of it, the the front end of his asphalt uh plant. Well, what this guy did is came in with four or five truckloads and I've confirmed this with the neighbors. And he basically dumped it and used a front end uh loader to just basically push it around. It was never laid as asphalt, but it sticks together now because it's old asphalt that sits in the Florida sun. So they're claiming now that this is an asphalt road all the way around their property. In any case, that's that's kind of irrelevant until I get a little bit later, but Iron had, you know, horse barns, he had trailers on the property, it is greeting kennels, and he had his field grown landscape nursery. When the property was sold, that's what it looked like on the left picture, more or less what I just described to you with probably, you know, some of the fill disappeared and uh you can see there's some uh trailers and things parked there. Well, now, if you look at the picture on the right, this is the way things are today and it may not look like much because bear in mind, this, this picture uh is almost a year old. Since then, now you can see there's a new barn here. Uh, he's re-roofing the old horse barns. Uh, the boards are visible here, but he basically concreted the inside of these horse barns, quote pole barns, and then converted them into dog kennels. This is storage back here and he claims this is a chicken coop. My chick, my forty chickens wish they had it so good. I don't know exactly, but I think that thing is probably sixteen by twenty. My poor chickens have an eight by eight. So the point I'm making here is he's, even as of last year, there's been a number of improvements to this property. Now, the only thing that was done according to our process is the pool. You'll see a pool here. From what I understand, they pulled permits, they went through the whole process, put the pool in, the permits are closed out. Let me go on to the next picture. Now, the colors here are representing the changes that have been made to the property. Uh, and this again is as of two twenty-one last year. But the roads in red, he's been filling since he moved in. The uh office in the back behind the quote chicken coop. This building back here is one of those mobile office buildings. I'm not sure why you put that next to a chicken coop, but that's a mobile office building. You can't see it on here, but there's, because he's done things subsequently, but there's all trailers and things parked across the back of the property. Now, you can see also here, there's a fence here, there's a building here, there's uh the old barns. There's the chicken coop. None of these items, as far as I know, and there's a fence that goes all the way around the property. Uh, none of these were permitted at the start. All these were permitted after code enforcement showed up. And as far as I know, there's all open permits for all these projects that got started and may or may not have followed the inspection process. So I'm bringing this up, guys, uh, counsel, because I'm at wit's end. My neighbors are completely freaked out over this. Uh, it used to be that they were very friendly to me. When I taught, when I used to take the dog for a walk at a normal hour, uh, I would probably get two or three people a week saying, hello, Bob, hey, what's going on with the vet? What's the town doing to get him out of here? And in the, like I said, I've been working with Keith and we've been trying to go the code enforcement route. Now. Now, bear in mind, because this guy doesn't believe in following the rules, he has a judgment against some of over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from our special magistrate for all the open code violations. And I don't know the details of them. Julio or Keith could probably fill in the details because this, this property is very well known to them. And I'll give you a for example of, of how there's, the rules are not followed here. Because this guy claimed that he had a paved driveway, um, he could go back in and re-asphalt most of his property. Uh, I learned from Julio yesterday that the roadway that he built here, that he built a very nice gate for is actually not even permissible because it's too close to the other one. Now variances are always possible, of course. But, uh, the day before yesterday, uh, a neighbor called, no, I, I actually this time I saw it myself. There was a crew there to pave the property again. Uh, he was reported, uh, three weeks ago for trying to do the same thing. Well, yesterday they showed up. I gave Julio a call because it was the same crew as last time. I, I would imagine their intent was the same. Uh, Julio went out and had a conversation with them. And, uh, after he left, they paved it and finished the job this morning. So now we've got a complete paving job here that's illegal. Uh, from what one of the neighbors told me, the paving and I, I can only see from the street. I'm not going to start peeking through fences. But you know, the neighbors, uh, are telling me that there's also a kennel over here, but I haven't seen that for myself, so I can't attest to it. But the roads he built back here now basically continue to dump all the water on the properties behind. And of course, uh, all the water from this side of his property tends to go to the south.
Bob?
Yep.
And may I interrupt respectfully?
Sure, please.
Um, this looks like a nightmare. Um, you know, I, it, this, this is just, it's just unbelievable what you're showing us. You know, I, I fully support, you know, us filing some sort of a, an emergency. I don't know what you would call it, an injunction, uh, stop order, stop work order. Uh, you know, uh, a police car out front all the time. I don't, I don't know what the, what, what exactly the, the mechanism that we use, uh, um, but, uh, but this is really egregious. I mean, this is, this is beyond the scope of anything, you know, uh, around here. And I feel really bad that your neighborhood had to even put up with this for, I don't know, what, what are you saying?
Years.
Yeah, two years. I mean, this is, this is like unbelievable. This is like beyond abuse. You know, and I, and I fully support whatever it is, we've got to do to stop it tomorrow. Or, you know, the next day, whatever, whatever that, whatever that is. It's, because I know, I know you probably have more than I didn't want to interrupt you with more, but I just wanted, you know, I know you, uh, I apologize if I interrupted you too.
No, no, they, they, I have a little bit more, Gary, but, uh, no, your feedback is important. I think David, you had your hand up.
Yeah.
Um, through the chair, do you mind if I recognize him?
Yeah, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I, I, I echo Gary a hundred percent. Um, and I understand that there are provisions in our code that allows a veterinary practice. But I think the points that you were making that this, um, uh, I guess sort of from law school, I remember the word scalawag. Uh, is operating illegally with the way that they are disposing of, um, uh, obviously there, there, it, it's, that's not household waste that's i- in those cans with the, the volume that's there. Um, there's, uh, there's biomedical, uh, stuff that he is disposing of. Um, and the way that the, uh, the box is laying on the ground, um, that there's got to be something that we can think outside the box to, um, have something served on him. I mean, I, I would, I would move that, um, to instruct legal department to hit him before noon tomorrow, if it's even possible.
Yeah, I, I, I wanted to save the questions for Keith to last so that we can strategize. Um, rather than go piecemeal David. So if you wouldn't mind waiting a couple of minutes.
Right.
Hold your responses.
All right.
Thank you guys for your feedback and support. Let me, uh, let me just bring up one or two other things. So I had, uh, uh, Officer, um, what's his last name? Uh, you bear with me a second. Austin, Officer Austin was out here last week because, uh, there was a very big dog running around our neighborhood. So, you know, Davey, if, if it was an issue, they could have called animal control. So about a hundred and twenty pound rottweiler was running around. And then, uh, 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 so I got talking to, uh, Officer Austin and he was telling me that he's actually pulled people over that are ha- on Griffin Road that are having veterinary emergencies, you know, puppies in the back of the car or a mother that's having a difficult pregnancy or what have you, flying down Griffin Road. He's pulled him over for it, going to this veterinarian. So all the more reason it doesn't belong in a neighborhood. But then, um, I got a note yet, uh, Monday, I believe it was, uh, or Tuesday, Tuesday from Town Hall that, uh, I put up here. And again, I had zero to do with this. This is the neighbors operating on their own frustration. On one twenty-five, twenty twenty-one, while on patrol in Southwest Ranches, and this was by, um, Officer Laguna. Uh, I was stopped by numerous residents on one ninety-eighth terrace who all wished to remain anonymous. The residents voiced concerns regarding vehicles traveling south and north on one ninety-eighth terrace, entering and exiting the residence where Caesar Morales homeowner is performing veterinary services. There were several concerns that were reported. There was a concern in reference to a veterinary clinic being operated in a residential neighborhood. There was also a concern expressed in reference to extremely high volume of traffic utilizing one ninety-eighth terrace in order to have services performed by Morales. Customers reportedly use Morales's veterinary services at all times of day and night, sometimes blocking one ninety-eighth terrace, waiting to enter the business and tossing garbage out their windows as they sit and wait. Further, it was reported that the speed of the vehicles traveling to and from Morales's businesses are excessive. And the vi- the drivers think the street is a racetrack. The citizens I spoke to, uh, consider these activities a disturbance as it adversely affects the quiet enjoyment and quality of life expected by the town residents. Morales was operating his clinic and I was not able to speak to him about the listed concern, concerns. Detective Hobolus and Southwest Ranch's code enforcement will be made aware of this report. They'll also send it to blah, blah, blah concerning the one ninety-eighth terrace. So that's the resident speaking to the police. The police have been out multiple times. This is the first time I've seen a complaint on it. And I have to give, uh, Officer Laguna tremendous uh, kudos on this. I see her patrol our street pretty frequently. And to have neighbors come out to her and discuss this issue. She does a great job of community oriented policing. So thank you to her. But I, 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 I don't know the answer to this. Keith and I were trying an approach when I probably couldn't get an injunction against this. So now that, you know, it's a different council, it's a different group of people. The problem is still there, but I'm appealing to you all to take the right action based on Keith's guidance. Keith, I'd love to hand it over to you at this point.
Sure. Um, just to, to add, I mean, your presentation was amazing. I, I called Andy. I said, hey, we need, uh, Bob to do this in court. Uh, the, the reality is, is we've, we've exhausted the code enforcement, uh, remedies. It's in court, but because of COVID, nothing's moving anywhere because it's not deemed to be an emergency. So you asked for a special set hearing and I know David knows this. They're like, uh, you know, March, April, until you can get fifteen minutes with the judge to go over a simple issue, which, which is crazy. Also, the legal counsel for Mr. Morales is constantly ill. And as a result, uses that to delay even further and the judge has been allowing it. So unfortunately, um, you know, the only legal maneuver is an emergency injunction. I want to add one thing, um, because I, I, I don't want to think that anyone think that we didn't go this, uh, way. We have called the state and, and Councilmember Vice Mayor Hartman knows this on numerous, numerous occasions to go out there and to look at the property. They have gone through garbage cans, but at the time they went out there, they did not find biohazards or others. So state has investigated. The problem that the state has is he does have a license from them for a mobile clinic. So wherever that vehicle is, they consider that to be okay in a mobile clinic. And they keep saying, town, this is your problem. If he is doing it illegally in your zoning district, you know, we can't regulate this. If he did something out of his house, absolutely, we could shut him down and, and probably pull his license forever. But if he's doing this out of his mobile clinic, which it appears to be, there's not much we can do. So we call the state on a constant basis to have them go out there, search those garbage cans when it's not known and to actually visit the property to confirm that he's complying with state law. But at this point, he violates, uh, our town code. Uh, one thing that, uh, Councilmember Kuzinski brought up that I just want to, you know, make sure everyone understands. The law in the town, in the zoning code, for some reason, and no one can tell me why, does allow veterinary clinics in this zoning category for some strange reason. Uh, he does not have a certificate of use. He's not approved for it, but the zoning code allows it. But on the other side, the comprehensive plan specifically prohibits it. And clearly the comp plan is stronger than the zoning code. So as a result, we have to follow what the comp plan says, not the zoning code, which is why this is a prohibited use. The only reason I even bring that up to you all is because at some point that per- uh, permitted use needs to be removed from the zoning code so that no one can ever say, hey, it's in the zoning code and it's permissible. But at this point, uh, the only way to get this resolved is through an emergency injunction to immediately shut him down. Um, it would, uh, be filed on Monday. It's, it's a, you know, a mini hearing. Uh, essentially we will bring witnesses, we will bring this police officer, we will bring Vice Mayor Hartman, we will bring, um, uh, you know, whoever else wants to testify on this matter. And we go before the judge and explain why it needs to be shut down now. Um, and that's how it operates. So, you know, the, the code enforcement violation still continues. It still goes down that path, but this just gives you a secondary path to get relieved. And from my standpoint, under a town code, for us to file litigation requires three affirmative votes of the council. And I know that's why Councilmember Hartman brought it up today to see if three council members support getting this filed and getting this stopped.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
Um, Bob, I make a motion that we file an emergency injunction.
Second.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, Bob, thanks for bringing this to, to our attention. Um, you know, to me, this falls into the same category of things that, um, give rural or, you know, animal veterinarians a bad name. You know, this, this could be done right in a million ways. Um, or it can be done in a way that is completely illegal, disrespectful to the, the town and the neighbors and, um, total disregard for our community as a whole. And so, um, you know, I, I, I support what you're saying.
Okay, let me just add another comment real quick. So, um, you know, oh, two, two and a half years ago, uh, when Robert first went out there, the, the, the vet told Robert that he probably would be out of there in three months. He's got a location in Davie he's negotiating on. And you know, at that point, I, this is this guy's living. I don't want to stop him from making a living. However, three months later, he was still there. So then about a year ago, uh, there was, he had some people going into Town Hall on his behalf, lobbying on his behalf. And they were saying, give him a break. He'll be out of here in three months. He's got a place in Davie. Well, I guess he used that story yesterday and, um, you know, the town investigated his claim and this house that he's supposedly renting is in a residential neighborhood in Davie. So I don't know what to believe from him. I mean, I haven't had the conversations, but he's told code, he's told, uh, Robert, once upon a time, he's told the residents, I, you know, I, I, I think we've got an egregious violator here that is making a lot of money and doesn't want to stop the way he's making his money. He needs to move into an office somewhere. So that, that's, that's the conclusion of my comments. And if Keith, if you need help from me or any of the neighbors, I don't know how willing they would be, but I'll ask.
And, and the one other item I want to add and make sure the council's on board. Does anyone in the council object if at one of the next meetings, we bring forward the text amendment to correct the code to show that this is not a legal use?
I have no problem with that.
Yeah, no, I think that's the right thing to do.
I have no problem. If, if I can add, um, I think that, um, I, I, I think that what makes it offensive is that he is operate, he has his mobile unit, his mobile office, and he is operating it in his, uh, residential property. Um, I, I know, um, Sally Brockin's husband is a veterinarian off of Hollatee. And he drives around to perform veterinary services on, um, the equestrian community. And I don't want, um, this type of a regulation to somehow impact our good neighbors. And, and that's, that's a very important point that we have to emphasize with this.
So I think that's a great point. I'm sorry, David.
It's okay.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think that's a great point. And I think that's, that's one of the, that's the thing is, uh, you know, once again, you know, this could be easily misinterpreted as, you know, we're somehow against veterinarians in town. Nothing could be farther than the truth. That, that's, that's, uh, you know, a great use and a great skill for our community and it's one in need, you know, it's, it's the way this is being operated that is in total disregard and respect for the community, the neighbors and, and the ability of that property to handle, um, that volume of traffic. It's just not, it's just not right. So we need to be careful how we do that. I don't want to overreact. That, that's, I mean, that's a great point. We don't want to somehow overreact. And all of a sudden veterinarians are not welcome in town. That's certainly not.
Intended consequences. Yeah, 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 Jim.
Uh, Mr. Polikov, I've got a question for you and Bob, uh, maybe the residents there. Going forward with this, uh, emergency injunction. I know we need some type of evidence and they've not been able to find anything when they go out. Maybe the garbage is collected. And I wouldn't want to be the neighbor to go and collect garbage out of his, but is there any way that maybe the residents or someone could collect some of that biohazard stuff out of the garbage can as proof or as evidence towards what we're doing to help with the cause? Is that something that's, I mean, would you need that type of evidence?
Oh.
Because if so, I'm, I'm sure we could find somebody to do it.
No, I, I don't want that evidence. Uh, I don't need that evidence and I don't want residents really getting involved to that manner or dealing with biohazardous waste. That's really up to the state to be dealing with that. And we require the state to go over there on, on a constant basis. And, and I was just speaking to, uh, Jeff Cadens real quickly because I asked him to start preparing the text amendment. And, and I made it clear from what I heard that you all are totally supportive of veterinary mobile clinics that go to house to house to actually treat horses and animals in a true mobile setting. But it's a fixed location that the council's opposed to in the town. And I just wanted to clarify that, uh, as we're drafting this, uh, regulation.
I believe that's correct, Keith. All right. So I think we have a, a motion, a second on the floor. Um, do we have any discussion before we vote?
One more quick question.
Do you want to open, do you want to open it up?
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Hold on just one second. I, Jim.
Yeah, one more question, Keith. You, you said, I mean, I absolutely agree. He's got a mobile unit there. Is that technically a mobile unit?
No, I mean, it is.
Right. You know, we got to get around that technicality that he's using as a mobile unit.
To the state, it, 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 it avoids their issue. To the town, it does not avoid it because the mobile unit has never left that property in, in years.
Thank you. That's a trouble. It has wheels.
All right. So, um, yeah, let's, let's open this up to the public. I'd love to hear their thoughts, their concerns. Let's open up to the public and see, uh, what the public feedback is on this.
No speakers at this time here.
Okay. All right. Any, any further discussion on this, uh, motion? All right, Russell, if you could call the, call the roll.
Certainly. Uh, Councilmember Auburn? Yes. Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
A motion passed?
Go get him, Bob.
Okay.
Bob, do you have, is that conclude your comments or?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen, for your support on behalf of the neighborhood.
You're welcome. All right, um, I, I will go through my comments. I'll try and make it quickly. Fortunately, uh, most of it has already been covered. I, I will go through my comments. I'll try and make it quickly. Fortunately, uh, most of it has already been covered. Unfortunately, it was a while back. You may have forgotten it by now. No, I'm just kidding. No, um, but most of it has been covered. So I'll be, I'll be relatively quick. Um, we're going to keep the, uh, comp plan, comp board busy, I think. Um, I wanted also send another item to them. I just wanted to bring this up. Um, one of the, one of the issues we've seen recently, um, in a number of places, but most prominently over in Sunshine Ranches, um, was a situation where there was going to be a large, potential large development. And that, uh, was going to go from a CF facility to zoning to, um, either RE or RR, could go either way because it, there was RR properties that, uh, butted up to it and it was RE properties that have butted up to it. And of course, the developer wanted to do the RE, so it was one acre, um, could put in more homes, um, develop it at a higher density and create more traffic and other issues that could potentially roll over and create almost like a domino effect, uh, to other properties. So, uh, Sunshine Ranches was, uh, um, very strong behind wanting to, uh, ensure that if this was developed, that it was developed as an RR, the two and a half, uh, net two acres, uh, zoning, um, so that the density was much lower. Um, what I'd like to propose, I'd like to have the comp board take a look at it. Um, Keith has, uh, been speaking to Keith about this and he's produced some, um, proposed language that needs to be looked at and reviewed by the comp board and then by the council is that basically saying if a property is looking to be rezoned, this does not apply to properties that are already zoned and they're just going to subdivide their property. This does not apply to that. But if you have a property that's going to be rezoned, it, um, is up against two different types of zoning like RE and RR, um, where they can pick and choose which one they want. What this ordinance would basically say is that you have to choose the lower density. You would have to choose the RR. If you're going to develop it, it needs to be at the lower density. It needs to preserve our open space. I think it's critical to have on the books so that developers that come in, um, it's good for them too, because they know ahead of time, this is the way it's going to be. They don't spend a lot of time. They don't spend a lot of money. They don't, you know, um, create issues in town for something that's just not going to happen because we have an ordinance against it. And so I would propose that, uh, the comp board take a look at that ordinance and, um, see if it's, uh, see if that's viable, um, and look for, uh, you know, if there's any issues with it. Um, I don't know. I, I kind of want to hear if there's, uh, any feedback from the council on this, on, uh, any concerns or anything that we should also, um, forward to the comp board. But I, I, I believe that preserving, you're talking about preserving the rural lifestyle, you're preserving the open space. And, um, to see, you know, properties that are in, especially anywhere in town, but especially in an area that is predominantly two and a half acre, uh, properties, um, for a big chunk of it to then be, uh, rezoned as one acre. I just don't think that's appropriate.
I have a question, Steve.
Yeah.
Um, hypothetical at this point, uh, it would probably be based on what you're proposing. Uh, out west where you live, there's a lot of big nurseries. Uh, you know, 185th, 186th, 188th and 210 and all that. Potentially, they're going to someday probably be homes. Uh, you know, it's a potential. Uh, how would this affect that? Would they be the, uh, would that be A1, A2, R, RE, RR? Well, how would that default, I guess?
Yeah.
On now, because that, because the one by the church that we're talking about, I think that's kind of a no brainer. Um, I'm looking at the more difficult ones, you know, that may come up uh, five years from now or three years from now, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, um, and, and Jeff can probably answer this a lot better than I can. Um, there's, you know, out west, um, the majority of the property is zoned A1. It's not RE, it's not RR, it's A1. A1 is an unusual zoning in that it is technically, my understanding, minimum of two and a half acres. But then you go out here and you realize almost every house is like an acre and a quarter or acre. Um, and my understanding for that, and this is where I would lean on Jeff to correct me if I go astray or, uh, or give the real knowledge, is that there is a grandfather for the properties out here where they are, can be developed, you know, as small as one acre. Jeff, do you know that off the top of your head, how that, how that works?
Um, those properties, they're all, they're all grandfathered because, um, they were platted a long time ago. And at the time they were platted, um, they met the requirements. Um, there were, there might have been an 80,000 square foot, um, lot area requirement for some of those, uh, which is less than an acre. It's about 1.83 acres. Um, or yeah, um, and some of them, uh, were probably platted when there was one acre required, including the street. A lot of them, a lot of the lots go to the center line of the street. And so they don't really have a buildable acre. Um, it's just due to the timing of it.
Right, right. So Gary, to answer your question, um, out here, there is not, there, it would not apply out here because we don't have a two and a half acre zoning out here that would, we'd have to be choosing from. It's all, it's all one acre out here.
Okay.
Any other thoughts, concerns from the council?
Um, question.
Yeah, David.
Mr. Mayor, is, um, is this proposed as a ordinance or an amendment to the comp?
Um, well, we would need to make sure that it is in compliance with the comp plan. But my thought was that it would be an ordinance.
Keith, what are you thinking?
Well, I, I worked with Jeff already in drafting, uh, language for the comp plan board to review. It would be an ordinance and it would go in the zoning code directly in the standards on how to rezone a property so that anyone seeking ever to, seeking ever to rezone a property would see it directly in there that, uh, you have to choose the, uh, surrounding zoning district that has the lowest density. So, um, you know, if you're surrounded by RE and RR, you have to choose RR because it has lower density than RE. And, and that's basically how that works. So, um, we drafted it for the comp plan board's review. We're, we're looking forward to see what they have after they've reviewed it and, uh, then bring it back to the council for consideration.
Sounds like a plan.
I have an additional question. Um, say, um, we're just gonna, um, look 10 years, 10 years down the road. We have this on the books. Um, none of us are on the board. We have a complete different council. Would that be a five O vote to rescind that?
Yes, it's a, uh, it's a major decision dealing with a quasi judicial, uh, legislation. It's, it's a rezoning.
Okay. All right, awesome. I appreciate the comments, the questions. Um, I want to make sure we do this right. Uh, I want to make sure it's well thought out. Um, but I think that it's, it's critical that we, we move in this direction because once the properties, you know, if they get zoned the other way, they'll never, they'll, they'll, we'll lose that space forever.
Mayor Steve?
Yeah.
If I got this straight in my head, if, just bear with me here. We're not really rezoning anything for
No.
what we're doing is we're dictating rezoning language for future rezoning. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct. Yes.
Okay.
I mean, it is correct.
I mean, if I got it straight in my head, you know.
Yes.
The process.
Yeah, no, this is not, this is not, this is not associated with any particular piece of property. It's not changing the zoning of any particular property, you know, that, that property that, uh, in Sunshine Ranches that brought up a lot of these discussions, it was CF, um, zoning. It's still CF zoning. It could be CF zoning for another hundred years and this would not.
You'd just be changing the rules as to, um, what site, what type of rezoning you're allowed to seek. You're changing the rules.
And, and I want to just add to that, the reason why this is so important, and I'm so glad the mayor brought it up, is because developers who look to the town and look at the property, look at the rules, uh, and this will be black and white for them to see where they can start and what they can do before they even put a property under contract and create controversy in the town. So it will be the first time that this rule is codified so that everyone can understand it.
Yeah. Great. You know, I, I just, I just have to make an observation for tonight that I am, I'm, I'm just really proud of this council and to be a part of it for the things that we've discussed tonight are really important things for preserving this rural lifestyle. It wasn't just something that, you know, we talked about during the campaign trail. Um, it's something I know we all believe in and, um, it's great to have a discussion like we had tonight um, on a lot of different issues, you know, whether it's light, whether it's fill, whether it's, uh, you know, the uses of property, um, zoning, it's all, it's all many, many different ways that we're all looking at, whether it's the landscaping, you know, all of those are different ways to, to translate that we're, you know, protecting our rural lifestyle into action that really does exactly that, um, protect our town for future generations. So I'm just, uh, super proud of this council.
You're here.
Five ships sailing in the same direction.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, a couple of other things, uh, I did want to mention that, um, uh, we're, we're, we're picking up, I know there was some challenges in the fall trying to get the student council going, um, with Sullivan Madison, you know, just an amazing, uh, young woman in our town, and this is an idea that she's brought forth. Um, I'd like to see that picked up and gone forward and we're going to, uh, you know, work with her to make that into a reality. So just, uh, to let you all know that's, that's in the works. Also in the works, we are in the process, we have now gotten back the results, um, for this year's fire study. Um, it's not right, it's not perfect, but it's on the right track. We're going to have to go back and forth, I think, a couple more times before we have something that, uh, is ready to, uh, you know, to show to the public, to show to the, you know, really for the council to discuss seriously. Um, there's still some things there that I'm not comfortable with, I'm not happy with, and, um, so we're going to be meeting actually this coming week, um, with Chris and Marty and Andy, and we're going to be starting to go over this. So it's, it's still a work in progress, but I just want everybody to know that this is a top priority, was a top priority, you know, uh, two, three months ago, um, and it's still a top priority. We're going to get this, we're going to get it right. And, um, and I appreciate Andy has really been, uh, super helpful in kind of, um, keeping this on the front burner. So thank you for that, Andy. Um, it was mentioned earlier, but I just want to give my personal kudos to, uh, Russell and, uh, and everybody that's supported him in moving up the, uh, the distribution of the, uh, the agenda book a week early. Um, I heard from a number of residents how they really appreciated that and how they, uh, um, you know, they were heard and they really appreciated that. Russell, thank you. Thank you for what you did. And, and I know it was a team effort. I know a lot of people had to adjust their schedules and their, uh, the way they, they do their job to make it happen. So, uh, great team effort and thank you. Thank you for making that happen. Um, also, this was mentioned earlier, so I'll be quick, but, um, it, it bears being, uh, uh, mentioned again, um, that grant, uh, for $250,000 for the, um, stormwater master plan is something we have been looking at. I remember when I first got involved in the town, you know, on my first board, you know, back around 2003. Um, and we, we recognized that we needed to do this and, and we, you know, it's expensive. It's, it's, you know, we tried to tell ourselves it wouldn't be that expensive and, uh, and, you know, uh, somehow the vendors outside taught us differently. Uh, so this is a, this is a huge thing. Um, you know, we talk about the things that all the elements coming together. Um, the things that, uh, Representative Bartman is doing for us, the things that, uh, the, uh, different drainage districts are doing for us. Um, we're kind of, next, next month, we're going to have our meeting to get everybody together to talk about things that we should be doing ourselves. All these elements are coming together and so it's a great team effort. Uh, I know a lot of this, Rod, I just want to do a call out to you as well. I know a lot of this is going to fall into your, into your world. Uh, you're going to be a busy guy. Um, we appreciate all you do as well and the work that you do. So, thank you. Um, and one last thing I did want to mention, um, I, uh, uh, I know this is maybe, maybe a little personal, but I, I want to go there anyway. Uh, Keith, I just want to say it's good to have you back. I know you had, uh, you had, you had a rough time there. Um, you know, it was while we weren't meeting, so a may, a lot of folks, folks didn't know about it. But we are so happy that you are healthy, you are back, you are doing your thing, you are truly appreciated and appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
All right. So, um, with that, we'll go to legal comments.
Thanks, mayor. And, and for any resident who did not know, unfortunately, I, I did end up getting COVID from my sophomore in high school. Uh, one of the things I will tell you is for teachers to not be considered in a priority to get vaccinated is just simply absurd.
So.
Uh, I had no pre-conditions. I exercised routinely, uh, was totally fine until the night of nine, uh, when the COVID entered my lungs, which apparently happens, you know? And I was immediately medevac, uh, to a hospital in ICU for 10 days until they were able to, uh, clear my lungs with a cocktail and I'm probably back at about 80% today. So, uh, anything you hear on TV, um, you know, i- it's not true. I wish I'd gone to a hospital immediately on day one to start the cocktail because that, that does make a major difference. And I would just urge everyone until you get vaccinated, uh, to stay cautious because you just never know how it's going to impact you. And I never knew how it was going to impact me and five members of my family got it, including my 73-year-old mother. And I was the only one who had an impact with no pre-existing anything. Uh, and I would urge the, the governor to understand that if you're going to force teachers to go back to the workplace, you have to get them vaccinated. It's that simple. Uh, but thanks, mayor, and sorry, I'm still a little bit hoarse from it, but, uh, I, I'm almost back to normal. One thing I also want to say is when I got back and no one really mentioned this, so I just want to mention it. Uh, like literally the next day that I got out of the hospital, the town had the most amazing meeting that I had ever attended. And that was a visioning session that was, uh, helped to be put on by Anna, uh, Coldis, I think her name is, and, and Bob Hartman. Um, and it, it truly was a wonderful event. It was open to the public, conducted a town hall on, on the weekend and, uh, truly between Russell and Anna and, and Bob and the, and the staff, you all did an incredible job sitting, setting vision and goals for the future of the town. And, uh, I was so happy I was able to listen in, um, to that meeting. And just want to thank Anna because she, she truly did a wonderful job. Um, a couple of other real quick things because I know we've had a long meeting, so I'm only going to add two more. Years ago, um, you have your charter, your charter states that every four years you're supposed to have a charter review committee. It was kind of crazy because by the time you were done with your charter review committee, um, and passed the new charter amendments, it was time for another charter review committee. Uh, and why the last time we didn't push the charter review committee, uh, out longer and make it every 10 years, which most cities have, uh, I don't know, but instead what the then council did, and, and I know, uh, the mayor was on that council, you all voted to move the next charter review committee to January of 2021, which seemed like forever when we did it, uh, because you were hoping at that point that the census data would be in so that you could also do your redistricting committee, which is required by law at similar time. So the only reason I bring this up is because there was an ordinance on the books that required us to ha, start the charter review committee basically now. Um, so, um, Andy is going to meet with you on your one-on-ones to discuss the formation of the charter review committee and what you all would like to do about it. Uh, and Russell has already started the process on the, um, second committee, which would be the redistricting committee to, because what we're going to need to do is once the data unfolds is, uh, meet with, um, FAU, I think is who it is, FIU, FAU. Uh, Russell, you can, uh, tell me which one. But, um, they're the ones who basically help the town compile the data and give you the numbers so you can all start, uh, in committee drawing lines of where the districts are going to be. So those are two really important committees that Andy's going to talk to you in the next meetings about. Uh, the number one, one that we have to form now is the charter review committee. And then the secondary one is going to be the, uh, the one for redistricting. Um, other than that, mayor, I, I, it's great to be back. I thank you for your kind words and for everyone who reached out, uh, COVID is not fun, but I will tell any resident or any- COVID is not fun, but I will tell any resident or anyone who gets it because unfortunately it is still going around. If you have questions, call me because I can tell you what to take and not to take. And unfortunately, I feel like a self-proclaimed expert at this point. And helping all my friends who have gotten it and, you know, it's amazing. Doctors know so very little about this disease. That until it happens to you and you do all that research, you know, i- it's amazing. I called my doctor and said I have COVID. He goes, ah, take vitamin D3, take zinc, you'll be totally fine. You're in your early 40s, what are you worrying about? And I called, I was like, I just got out of ICU, I was here for 10 days plus five. And he's like, oh, really? What, what'd they give you? I want to write it down, you know, so i- it's just amazing what they don't know today. And, and again, I'm, I'm sorry for everyone who's had it and, and who didn't make it. We had some directly in the town hall, Andy, whose father didn't make it, you know, and it was so sorry to hear that story. So, you know, my heart reaches out to all of them. Andy, I'm gonna turn it over to you for your comments due to the time.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Keith. Thank you, Mayor. And, and again, due to the hour, I'll be expedient. Just a couple of things I want to bring up. I do want to thank you all for your participation in the strategic planning session. I've got your comments back. I'm gonna spend tomorrow going through that, working on updating that information and then updating the input that you provided for the resident survey. And so I'll get all that information out to all of you next week. The only other thing I wanted to touch on, and I actually want to throw it to Russell, is you, several of you have, have brought up the Stormwater Grant that, that we received. And I want to throw it to Russell because it was actually his contact that brought us that opportunity. And he worked very hard with Emily and Rod who did a, just an absolutely outstanding job to land that. But I did want to let Russell take a little bit of a victory lap and speak about that a little bit more. So thank you.
I'll make this extremely short, Andy. Thank you for the, for the time. Basically, I was approached in July of last year by a former coworker who is now a consultant in that field. And advised me that the State Department of Economic Opportunity was providing grant opportunities for the Florida, the rebuilding Florida program. And it outlined several different program areas and one of them was something that I felt we could take advantage of. And I, I mentioned to him the idea of trying to pursue it for the Stormwater Master Plan, which was something that was identified by the Town Engineer, Public Works Director Rod Lay in previous discussions as being a critical need. And I recognize that we had, you know, many, many years where that item was put into the budget as a request and, and not funded. And so we pursued that. I want to give kudos to Emily and Rod. They worked in a very tight timeline to get the the documentation that was needed to get back to the state of Florida, the Department of Economic Opportunity. We were able to meet the grant application deadline. And the short story is that we were advised just this month that we received the award for $250,000 with no town match. So it's a great, great victory for the town.
Thank you, Russell, and, and absolutely outstanding job for, with Russell, Rod and Emily. So I thank them all for that.
Yeah, thank you, Russell. Thank you, Rod and Emily.
And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Andy. Okay. Alright, well, let's begin the, the business of the night then, alright? Okay, Russell, if you could read in item number nine.
Certainly, Mayor. Item number nine is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the text of the future land use element of the town of Southwest Ranches comprehensive plan to repeal the residential medium density land use category. Amending the text of the housing element to revise related policies, providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency. Requesting recertification by the Broward County Planning Council and providing for an effective date.
Okay, great. Is there, can I take a motion on this?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. I'm wondering, hey Jeff, can you, we've got a number of items here that are very similar. If you can kind of just walk us through why we're doing these things and, and, you know, at a high level what they're about, I'd appreciate that.
Sure, Mayor. All of these, except for one item, are second reading, ordinances on second reading. These are all ordinances that you voted on first reading to approve in a transmit to the state land planning agency for review under Florida statutes. They're now back for adoption. These are all issues that the council wanted addressed, including eliminating the residential 16 land use category. And references to it, which is this ordinance. Another ordinance adopts the new Greenways map that the council recently voted to update. Two of the ordinances address school level of service. This is something we've talked about many times. It's consistent with the resolution that the council passed a couple of years ago to support this new level of service, which is how you measure school capacity. The town is signatory to the county school, school board and municipalities in our local agreement that requires us to actually make these amendments since we signed on to that agreement. So one of the ordinances amends the comp plan. Where levels of service are set out and that's required by state law. And we're also required to amend the concurrency provisions in our land development regulations. Which talk about when development applications come in, how you measure capacity for schools to determine that they're in compliance or not. Those are, those are the ordinances on second reading. We have an ordinance on first reading, which is the water supply plan. You've already approved that as the LPA. I think, look at my list here, but I think that's all of them. Yeah, and then there's the, the, the capital improvement, the schedule of capital improvements that you update every year. That's it.
Awesome.
These are all routine items.
Perfect, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, we have a first and a second. Is there any of the council comment before we open up to the public? Alright, seeing none. Alright, let's open up to the public for any questions or comments that they have.
I don't see any members of the public raising their hand, Mayor.
Okay. Any further discussion from the council? Alright, Russell, if you could please call a question.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski? Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number 10, please.
Item number 10 is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending Article 110，并且是10-111 Public School Concurrenty of the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code. To update requirements for public school concurrency, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for separability and providing for an effective date.
Awesome, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have motion in a second. Any further discussion by the council? Is there any public comment on this item?
I don't see any, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, if you could call a question, please.
Councilmember Albritton? Yes. Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes. Item number 11.
Item number 11 is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the text of the public school facilities and capital improvement elements of the town of Southwest Ranches comprehensive plan. To update the level of service standard for public school facilities, providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency. Providing for conflict, providing for separability and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Thank you. Any further comment from the council? Is there any public comment?
Don't see any hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you. Alright, if you could please call the question.
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski? Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes. Excellent. Item number 12.
Item number 12 is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida. Amending the Greenways Plan Map and Related Policies in the Recreation and Open Space Element of the Town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan. Providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency, providing for conflict, providing for separability and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item from the council? Is there any public comment on this item?
I see no hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you. If we could call the role, call the question.
Councilmember Albritton? Yes. Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski? Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and then the last one of this first group, item number 13.
This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, adopting the five-year schedule of capital improvements for fiscal years 2021 through 2025 pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes. Providing for conflict, providing for separability and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council? Any public comments or questions?
I see no hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you. Alright, if you can call a question, please.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. You can read item number 14 in force, please.
This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the 10-year water supply facilities work plan. And adopting, implementing amendments to the goals, objectives and policies of the utilities element and capital improvements element of the town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan. Authorizing transmittal of the 10-year WS FWP and related comprehensive plan amendments to reviewing agencies providing for conflict. Providing for separability and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Thank you. So this is the one that we approved earlier tonight in the LPA. This is on first reading. Is there any comments or questions from the council on this one? Seeing none, is there any comments or questions from the public?
I don't see any hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you. Alright, if you can call a question for us, please.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
And Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Sure.
Thank you. We've got about 30 minutes to go before the Cinderella Clause kicks in. Keith, could you explain that to the, you know, the mayor and I know what that is, but the other members may not. Could you explain that?
Basically, you're correct. At 11:00 PM, the Zoom shuts off and we turn into pumpkins.
Yep.
Somebody record that to avoid that is through a unanimous vote of the town council. And that's by charter.
Right, so I believe the, we, whatever item we're working on, we can finish that item up, but we cannot take up another item. So if we're in the middle of an item, we need to, if we want to, we would extend the meeting and then continue on the debate.
Right, we would need to make a motion in a second and, and it has to be, am I correct, Keith, the unanimous vote?
Yeah, just to clarify what the mayor just said, you're allowed to finish the item that you're on. But you can't take additional items without the unanimous vote of the town council. So generally in the past, what you all had done is just a motion to approve extending beyond the 11:00 PM cutoff point to finish all agenda items. That is what you have done in the past.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that, that the clock was ticking and that coming.
If we, we and, and we do at least have one more item that I think may generate some significant discussion, so we'll see.
Yeah.
Alright, item number 15, Russell, please.
This is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, opposing any efforts to modify the Sheridan Street and Volunteer Road Southwest 148th Avenue intersection to install a left-turn lane from eastbound Sheridan Street onto northbound 148th Avenue, requesting that a copy of this resolution be sent to Mayor Geller and the Broward County Highway Construction and Engineering Division and providing an effective date. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I suspect we'll have some discussion on this one. Anybody want to start us off?
I have.
Mayor, there's one resident who wishes to speak. Do you want to open to the public before council?
I definitely want to open up to the public. I think, I think it would be helpful if maybe the council speaks about it first, kind of giving their thoughts. So the residents can benefit from that because we've known about this maybe longer than some of the residents have.
Go ahead, David. I was just.
Yeah, yeah, folks, um, this kind of fell into our laps with a proposal from Pembroke Pines wanting to rework the intersection of Volunteer Road, AKA Southwest 148th and Sheridan. And we had the HOA meeting to address this and the HOA voted unanimously to oppose that because of the concerns over additional traffic. That opening up a, moving the turning lane from the U-turn up to Volunteer would just make it far easier for the vehicles and, and, and traffic to get onto Volunteer and then come into our neighborhood. So the HOA voted unanimously to oppose this. I brought it before the council and it's something that I, I think is good. To express the position of the council.
Awesome, excellent. Thank you, David.
I have a comment there.
Gary.
Coincidentally, I just happened to have the latest traffic study of Sterling Road and Volunteer Road in my, in my hands. Some of you may not be aware of it, but it was a study that was requested from a resident who was having a major impact on Sterling Road several months ago. And the results of that basically is on Volunteer Road clocked north of Sheridan Street, and I'm just reading this off of the chart and the graph. In 2019, pre-COVID, with 7,200 cars. This is like a per-day count. And in this year, 220, during the COVID crisis going on, it's down to about 5,500, and I'm using round numbers. So there's a lot, there's a lot of volume on that street already. So we would just be increasing it exponentially by, you know, modifying that intersection. So I'm in, I'm in full support of the resolution. David, thank you for bringing that forward. I'm sure the, all the homeowners in Sunshine Ranches are, are happy about that also. And just as a little statistic factoid, the peak volume hour in the, in the AM was about 600 cars. And peak volume in the PM was around 500 cars. So, and copies of this are available. I think Andy has copies of it, David, if you want to look at. Or anybody else for that.
Copy of that.
I'll, I'll make a comment on it as well. You know, that, that intersection down there is an unusual intersection to get around. But it's not unusual for, just out of randomness. It was done that way specifically to protect the community of South, of Sunshine Ranches. And, and you have to make that U-turn for a reason. Because it's going to reduce the number of vehicles that go up Volunteer Road. It was done by design, not by chance. It's not a inconvenience. It's, it's a convenience actually to protect the town. So absolutely. So absolutely, I support opposing this change, and this is critical. We, you know, we spend so much time, think about all the time we spent just tonight talking about traffic, about speeding, about ways to get it under control. This would be a huge step in the exact opposite direction, creating more traffic, creating more, you know, through traffic, speeders, the whole nine yards. So we need to oppose this as strongly as we can. Any other, yes, Bob?
I'm just glad we're able to fix this before it starts. So many times, we're behind the eighth ball, trying to fix a problem that was left to us from the past. This time, we're able to be proactive, so I'm glad to hear.
Exactly. Great. Okay, any other comments before I open up to the public? All right, let's open it up to the public.
Okay, mayor, our first speaker is Chris Brownlow. Chris, can you hear us?
Yes, sir. I am, I'm late. I was waiting for this. First of all, I want to thank you all for bringing this to our attention as promptly as you had. The residents were extremely appreciative and extremely vocal. Thank you for being at our meeting when we voted upon this and sticking to your word to put it forth as a resolution at this meeting, which you have done. They will greatly appreciate hearing this outcome, so thank you, thank you, thank you. And if Jason's still listening, I want to thank him for his support in our social media campaign to reach out and inform our residents.
Great, thank you, Chris.
Yes, you know other hands, mayor.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on this item from the council? All right, Russell, if you could call the roll, please.
There was a man. Councilmember Allbritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. All right, item number 16, please.
Item number 16 is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order with Calvin Giordano and Associates Incorporated in the amount of $15,000 and zero cents for construction, engineering, inspection services for the Hancock Road guard rail improvements, authorizing the town administrator to execute the purchase order and providing an effective date.
Motion approved.
Excellent.
All right. So I'm wondering, I think that just for the benefit of the public, if we can maybe just give an overview of what this is going to accomplish for us. I don't know, Andy, if that would be you or Rod, whatever you feel is, is most appropriate.
Well, I'll give you certainly a brief explanation. If you need more technical data, then I'll turn it to Rod. But as you all may recall, over the last several years, we've been very successful in obtaining money from the state that we've used for expanding our guard rail work along canals in Sunshine Ranches. Over the last few years, we completed in a couple of phases Sterling Road from, from the entrance to the town all the way out to Volunteer. This is the next phase in that, in that project and spending the money that we've been successful in, in obtaining to protect the community. So we're expanding that, and now we're going to start on Hancock Road to, to further protect the public.
Very good.
If that answers your question, if there was.
Does.
What you're looking for, mayor.
Yeah, no, no, I just, when we vote on something like this, the public, I think it's, it's good for them to hear the overview of what, what the item is, is addressing. So thank you for doing that. Appreciate it. Okay. Any further discussion on this item?
I, I do have a minor inquiry. So with the implementation of guard rails along Hancock Road, and I'm very aware of the Sunday morning to, Sunday morning till, I guess, midday Sunday of the speeding, I've actually seen. And I know they're going to that church. I mean, I watch them go in there. So would the implementation of the guard rails be able to support putting a speed bump along Hancock Road?
It would not be part of the scope of this project, no.
I understand that, but it would be, it would, it would, it would, I was told that we couldn't put speed bumps in certain roads because there were no guard rails.
Yeah, so that's my thought. What I've heard in the past, I'm not, you know, I'm not the expert on the topic, but in a road like Sterling, it's difficult to put a speed bump on there until there are guard rails, because people at night may try to avoid the speed bump and find even a larger speed bump off on the side of the road there, you know. End up in the canal. So, so I think this actually would be a good precursor if that was to be considered.
That, that's the only question I had.
All right, thank you, David. Any other questions from the council before I open up to the public? Okay, Russell, is there any input from the public?
No, no one has their hands raised at this point, mayor.
Thank you.
There is one just came up, I believe it's Noel Hollingsworth.
Okay, great.
Noel Hollingsworth, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can hear me. Go ahead, you have two minutes.
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. I'm looking at the conceptual Greenways map in the comprehensive plan, and I believe the canal we're talking about is on the east side of Hancock. Is that correct? Because the trail right now is on the east side of Hancock that we have, the horse trail. Is that going to be a problem, putting the guard rails here? And is there going to be entrances for the horse trail? That's my question.
Good question.
Because if not, the comprehensive plan is going to have to be changed, Greenway. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Neil. I don't know if, if there's anyone on that can address that. I think that's, that's a good observation, that we want to make sure that, obviously, we want the guard rails there for safety, safety always is critical, but we want to make sure it's done in a way that the trail is still usable, still viable.
Mayor, Rod may be able to speak to that. I see he's unmuted himself.
Yeah, mayor, so to answer Mr. Hollings' question, yeah, it is on the east side. So I think it does, he's also correct, we're going to have to just revisit that map, the trails map, and, but we could definitely, at this point, still, because we're initially, we're essentially going through permitting right now, we could, if there's any way for us to essentially accommodate an entrance for it, we could look into that and incorporate that still.
Great, yeah, let's make sure that we add that to kind of the to-do list when we go through that. Great, thank you, Neil, appreciate that comment. All right, any other public comment?
No, mayor, there's no one else.
Great. All right, if you could please call the question.
Yes, councilmember Allbritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
And Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm going to make a request here. Item number 19 is an item that I think bears more discussion than being kind of tacked on the end when we're tired and most, a lot of the public has already, probably faded off the call already. So I would certainly, you know, if somebody wanted to make a motion to move this to the next meeting, I think that would be a good move.
I'll make a motion to table this, date certain next meeting.
Okay, so I think it was a motion from Bob and a second from David. Thank you, I appreciate that. Any, any discussion on this motion?
It's Keith, Andy, do you have any issue moving it to next meeting? Because I know next meeting is as bad as this one in terms of number of items on the agenda. Do you want to do a special meeting, or, you know, I don't know what the council desires or want to move it to the one after that, because I think the next one's a quasi judicial agenda.
We have an extensive, we have several quasi judicial matters, but I think for the most part, they're fairly simple. We have the US 27 issues coming back for second reading. I, I, listen, we'll bump it to the next agenda, and if we need to bump it again, obviously we'll do that. Certainly not a problem if council wants to bump it tonight, I respect that.
Make sure that the next agenda was the proper one, and it wasn't after that. Russell, what is the date of that agenda so that it can be announced for the?
Well, the next, the next meeting will be February 11th.
Okay.
And we'll be getting that agenda out tomorrow.
The motion would be to table item 19 to February, well, agenda's getting out tomorrow, so you have to add that to the agenda.
Yeah, that's, that's easy.
To February 19th at 7:00 PM.
But February 11th.
Sorry, February 11th. And quasi comes first, so it's not going to actually be till.
Right.
Yeah, so maybe what we can also do is, obviously quasi comes first, but rather than having this be towards the end, maybe we could have it as the first item of our normal non-quasi, or at least up in front, you know, I don't want to set the total agenda, but maybe earlier in the meeting so that we're sure we get to it.
If, if I can just add to that, because of our formatting and the publishing software that we use, that might be problematic, but what we would do is put it as a discussion item, which would appear at the end, but certainly council can make a motion to move it up during that meeting.
Okay, that works. All right, thank you. Let's see, did we, did we actually vote on that? I don't think we voted on.
No.
No, yeah, no, we haven't.
Okay, all right, so any other discussion on that before we vote? All right, Russell, if you could please call a question.
Councilmember Allbritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
And Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, item number 17.
Item number 17, excuse me, is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order in the amount of $2,223.0 cents to Crimson Technology Products for the purchase of a laser unit for the town of Southwest Ranches Police Department. Authorizing the use of forfeiture funds for, for this purchase, authorizing the town administrator to execute the purchase order and providing an effective date.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Before anything, anything goes on, I would like to entertain amending that resolution to, to laser.
Second that. Third.
Okay.
So what I'm taking that as is, well, go ahead, Keith, I think you're, you're going to say what I was.
No, no, I just to confirm the record on something. The price of the unit, the 2023, is that, Andy, how much each unit is?
That's half.
That's half, that's what I thought. So I just want to make it clear, so the new number would be 6,600, whatever that, that number comes to. And, and as a result of that, which is fine, the only question I have from Marty then is legally, do any budgetary accounts need to be mentioned at this point that we have to put in the resolution to do that appropriation? And if so, what is it?
And, hold that, hold that thought, if you would, mayor, because I'd like to call on Emily, because she can speak to what this particular device is and make you aware of maybe some other options, as long as we're going to expand that order and potentially increase the number of units we have. But, so I'd like to ask her just to kind of run through a little bit more detail so you know exactly what we're talking about and what our options are.
Sounds good, thank you, Andy. Emily?
Good evening, mayor and council. Yes, this is a laser unit, which is handheld. The police officers currently have radar units in their cars, but this is an actual handheld unit, which we don't have, which is a laser. And the actual cost of this is $2,223. And so, but there are others that we could get that are not related to this grant, that are in the $1,500 range or $1,900 range that are radar, that aren't laser. So if you would like us to go forward with others in exploring those with the police department, we can certainly do that and maybe have a cost savings on the additional piece of equipment.
Do they have a preference summary?
I know that most of the police officers are, are trained on the radar, and it's a special one for the laser, but we have several that are trained on the laser as well.
I do have a question, Emily, if I could, this is Gary. The total cost of the unit is $2,200, is that correct?
Yes, sir, for this particular unit.
The two of them would be 4,400, of which about 1,100 is covered by a grant. So our net, our net total would be somewhere right around 3,000 and change, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I want to make sure I had the map right in my head.
And, and that 3,000 and change is coming out of forfeiture funds, not, it's not tax dollars per se? Is that correct?
Correct. And the reason why this is in front of you is because in order to use forfeiture funds, we have to have council approval as per state statute.
I mean, I, you know, my, my thought is, whatever Davy police feel is the better unit, that's what we, you know, for the difference in price, I want to make sure they have the equipment that they feel like is most effective, especially since it's coming out of forfeiture funds and a grant.
Can I, can I throw something out here?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I would have passed this item as is. We now know that there's a full consensus of the council to get at least one more unit, maybe more, but, but I'm seeing from staff, you know, that we do need to do a budgetary amendment if we're going to add more to it. Marty has, has told me that now three times, that, you know, it's going to have to have special language in the resolution. So a, as a result of that, we also have to see, as Emily said, if, if which Davy officers are trained in laser versus radar. So if you bought an extra laser, maybe just sits there because no one certified to use it. So we have to get with Davy PD, which Andy and I have a meeting with them next week or week after anyway. So if we could please move this, the more radars or lasers to the second meeting in February, adopt this tonight so we can buy this one, and then we'll have it all worked out by that meeting.
Should we table the whole thing?
No, you definitely want to buy this because it's under forfeiture funds and a grant. So you want to buy this unit and put it in their hands immediately.
Okay.
And so it would just be a new resolution for the additional ones.
So can, it sounds like what we would want to do in that situation is to withdraw the motion.
I'll withdraw my motion.
And then make a new motion as, as it's presented here.
And I'll restate the motion as for a single unit.
Thank you.
Before, before we get a second, mayor, if I may interject real quick, the title of the resolution, is that a squibner's error, Keith? It says town of Southwest Ranches Police Department. Should it not say town of Davy Police Department?
Technically, they're ours, but, you know, you could, we can fix that tomorrow.
Okay. There's a squibner's error. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, in case.
They are our police department.
Okay.
So that, so technically, it's okay. There, you know, if you look at their vehicles, it says Southwest Ranches also.
Okay, so I heard a motion, I have not heard a second, I don't think.
Excellent.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there any questions or comments from the public?
I don't see anyone's hands raised, mayor.
Thank you. Okay, if you could please call a question.
Certainly, mayor. Councilmember Allbritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Okay, motion pass.
Okay, so we're about nine minutes from that magic moment.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting to finish off the rest.
I think you're good, I think you can do it.
You think we can do that?
I don't know, we're going to be talking about a pickup truck, okay? That's not, you know, that's. I don't know. We're going to be talking about a pickup truck. Okay, that's not, you know, that's.
Let's pass the motion. If we get done in time, that's fine.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion?
All questions?
Please call the question.
Sorry, just pursuant to the charters, that to complete all items on the agenda last evening, the charter official review, is that correct?
I think that's what I heard.
That's my, that was my motion.
Okay. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Yes.
Mayor Burgus.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Can't remember the last time we did this.
It's been a while. It's been a while.
Gary, you put those motions so elegant. Thank you.
Practice makes perfect.
Yes.
All right, item number 18.
Okay. This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing the issuance of a purchase order to Allen J. Fleet Sales in an amount not to exceed $34,904.0 to purchase a new multipurpose vehicle for the town, approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget for machinery and equipment and providing for an effective date.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll start with the motion.
Second. I'm sorry, who made the motion?
That's your motion.
I think Jim made the motion.
I thought Bob made the motion. I was second and that's fine. Motion?
What, I say nothing and everybody falls.
The whole meeting falls apart, Gary. Can I, can I scrounge a second out there?
Second.
All right, thanks.
Respect our elders.
Mayor, this, this is an item that we've budgeted for, for the last two years. We put money aside in, in two separate fiscal years. The town originally, we have one pickup truck that we, we bought a couple of years ago. We had a Dodge Durango and a Dodge Charger that were left over from, they were surplus BSO vehicles going back to when we had BSO. The Durango is gone. It just died and we were able to sell that off at, at auction. But we were getting to the point where it was broken down more than it was working. We're now down to the, the existing Dodge Ram pickup truck and the Dodge Charger. The Charger is also getting very long in the tooth and we're having some problems with that. The town does need a second vehicle. And we've been working towards this one for a couple of years. So.
Great.
Thank you.
You know, if memory serves me right, and I, you know, feel free to correct me here, but I believe all these vehicles were used vehicles when we moved from BSO to Davie, so.
With, with, with the exception of the one pickup truck that we bought two years ago, yes, yes, everything else that we've had was, was pretty much at 100,000 miles when we took it over.
Right.
So, you know, they were at, at just about the end of their useful life. So we've gotten quite a bit of time out of them, but I blame this council member Jablonski called us to run them till the wheels fell off and that's what we've done.
All right, next one. All right, any, any discussion on this item? Okay, is there any public discussion on this item?
No hands are raised, Mayor.
Okay, great. If you could please call the question, Russell?
Sure. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
And Mayor Burgus.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Item 20, approval of minutes. We've got two sets of minutes. Maybe we can be wild and crazy and approve them both at once.
Don't get reckless now.
I know.
Second.
Okay. Appreciate it. Is there any, any discussion or correction to the minutes? Is there any public comment or corrections from the minutes?
None.
I don't see any hands raised, Mayor.
All right, thank you. If you could please call the question.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
And Mayor Burgus.
Yes.
You can do it.
Look at that, four minutes, three minutes to spare.
Time to spare.
Not bad, guys. I'm proud of you. Not bad.
Good job, guys.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Gary.
You're welcome. Anytime.
Russell, good job with that.
Thank you, everybody.
Notice it.
Thank you, folks.
Everybody have a good night.
Great, great serving with you. Thank you so much.
Give it all. Thank you.
Good night.